Time, we will be calling the Manoa Neighborhood Board to order this Wednesday, March sixth. And Anson, can I get a roll call to see if we have all members of our quorum of the board present?
Okay, um, when I say your name, play, please say present, okay? Uh, Zane.
Present.
Watson.
Present.
Bozol.
Present.
Agaji. Agaji. Okay, uh, Fukumoto. Fukumoto. Okay, Lumen. Lumen. Lee. Lee. Nope. Cough. Cough. Nope, uh, Chong.
Present.
Hey, Moylan.
Present.
He's here. Kuanu. Kuanu. Okay, and Fox. Fox, okay. Uh, one, two, three. We only have five, we don't need, uh, quorum.
Okay, uh. Very well, let's try go through the, the reports first, see if, um, by the time that the city and month, uh, state reports are finished, hopefully we can have more of our members present at that time, we can conduct business. I know there's also one item on the agenda, which is Ikina Kea. I do apologize for not including them on the agenda, but they did request it before, and hopefully there will be time for them to do a presentation regarding their project, which they also reported, and which was reported on in the news, uh, back on Monday. So hopefully, um, we, we can hear their presentation, include them on the agenda, and try to work somewhere around. So I just want to give everybody a heads up on that. In the meantime, we'll first hear from the Honolulu Fire Department. Is there a presenter from the Honolulu Fire Department here? Oh, I see somebody, uh, if you could unmute yourself, please? Hello? Maybe there's something going on. Oh, hello?
He was on.
Yeah.
My captain was on, but, uh, maybe his connection got dropped.
Yeah, maybe. In the meantime, we'll move on to, um, Lieutenant Nakamura with the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with the Police Department. Uh, these are stats for, uh, February as compared to the previous month. Uh, motor vehicle thefts were five as compared to fourteen. Burglaries, uh, went down two as compared to three. Thefts went down seven as compared to eight, and UEMVs, which is theft from autos, was zero as compared to two. This is out of total calls of service of six thousand one hundred and thirty-four. For the statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And our, uh, safety tip for the month is just a reminder that, um, there is a move over law in Hawaii, so if you see, especially if you see, um, fire trucks, EMS is probably the most common, but also police, police, uh, cars on the roadway, um, you are obligated to move over as much as, as possible. And at the very least, please slow down. Um, if you guys don't know this, this was born out of a tragic accident that we had on the H1. Oh, actually it was on Wanalua, where a police officer was, uh, was killed. So if you can, if you see guys working, um, on the roadway, especially on the freeways, um, please move over. And if there's an, if there's a, another lane that's completely, uh, open, move over one more. So you give the guys, um, space to work, and that, that includes tow trucks too. Because, um, they might not be your favorite people, but they will be when your car breaks down. Um, so give them space to work too also, and that's our safety tip for the month.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there any questions from the board regarding the Honolulu Police Department?
Yes.
Oh. Who said yes?
Uh, Chris Moylan.
Ah, yes.
The new guy. Is it possible to obtain traffic accident location data in the Manoa Neighborhood over the last several years? Like a map with little X's on it showing where all the traffic accidents tend to occur?
Um, the, the statistics that we give at the Neighborhood Board meetings are, uh, agreed upon by the department and the, uh, Neighborhood Board Commission. Um, anything outside of that, um, would be a special request, and
Yes, I'm making a special request.
Yeah, that would have to go through from Manoa Neighborhood Board to the Neighborhood Board Commission and to the chief. I'm not, I'm not of the requisite rank to make that kind of a decision, but you can definitely make it as a, you know, uh, bring it up with the commission. Um, and see if, um, other neighborhood boards are, are on board with that, or you could go through that after, I guess.
It doesn't really matter whether other neighborhood boards are, it's just worth knowing for all of us who live here where the accidents tend to be. And if there's a possible cluster anywhere that we could recommend a solution for.
Yes, I understand that. Um, what I'm trying to say is, um, if you can go through the Neighborhood Board Commission and they ask us, not me, the chief, um, whether that, that kind of information can be released on a, on a monthly basis, then, um, I can, I don't see a problem getting it, getting it done. It's just that I can't answer that question.
Right, I was not asking for a monthly basis, just a one time.
Uh, just a one time?
Yes. Do you have accident location data over the last several years in Manoa? Just one shot. That's it. Not something you would need to do all the time.
For like, uh, what, what, uh, period of time are we talking?
I don't know, last three years, last five years, something like that.
Last five, oh.
Whatever isn't too burdensome.
Well, the last three years is gonna be hundreds to probably approaching a thousand. So if it's make it the last year, let me ask my major, I don't know.
Last year would be fine. If there's that many accidents, it's worth, one year would be fine.
It's seven five zero and seven five one. Okay. Uh, let me ask my major and then I'll get back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, what is your name, sir? I know it's not Anson.
No, it's Chris Moylan, M O Y L A N. I was just added last month.
M O I?
M O Y L A N, Sub District Three.
Okay. Sure, I'll get back to you next month.
Thanks.
Member Bozol?
Thank you Chair, um, I'm wondering whether you have any information about, there seems to have been repeat run-ins with the residential wall that's just Maoka of the Lower Road intersection, do you know, are you familiar with that? There are more than once, it looks like somebody has run into the wall, it look, I, by my calculation, this is the third time in the last two years. And I was just curious if you had more information on that, because I'm wondering whether we need to get, um, like a light or a stop sign or some, you know, I'm, I'm wondering what's happening there that three times people seem to have run into the wall.
Um, where's the intersection? You said Lower Road and?
Wood Lawn, sorry.
Wood Lawn?
Mm-hmm. Right at the, yeah, right where Wood Lawn and Lower Road, just, uh, Maoka of that, there's a wall, there's actually a bus stop there as well. And three times I've seen that wall has gotten caved in, twice in the last, I mean, twice in a couple of weeks, actually. Looks like someone.
Okay, I'm not personally familiar about the accidents and what caused them, but I can definitely, um, uh, look into it. You said it was in the ma, past month or so, yeah?
Uh, could have been two months ago, I guess, uh, there were, there were two times in the last couple of months, and then there was a time, the other time might have been about a year ago, I'm not sure, but I just know that this, this is at least the third time that it looks like somebody has run into that wall. At impact, breaking the wall apart into the residential property.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Members of the community? Hearing, seeing none. Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Okay, take care.
And I see we have the Honolulu Fire Department back on, um, if you could do your report at this time, please?
Okay.
Hey, uh, this is, uh, the Manoa Fire Station. And I just go over our statistics for the month of February. We had two structure fires, uh, nuisance call, ten activated alarms, forty-five medical calls, one motor vehicle crash, we didn't have any mountain rescues this past month. And then our fire safety tip is about smoke alarms. They save lives, are an important part of the home fire escape plan. Properly install and maintain smoke alarms to give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas, hallways on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathroom, introduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month, press the test button to ensure they are working. If the smoke alarm requires a nine volt battery, you gotta replace that every year. And then replace the units every ten years or sooner if not responding correctly.
Um, if you're not speaking, you can please mute, um, if you please mute your mics. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
Do you have anything else to report regarding?
Uh, that is it. Do you have any, anybody having questions?
So, uh, members of the board, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Anybody from the community? Well, uh, member Bozol. Whitney, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm getting some major feedback, okay, um. There was a structure fire on Manoa Road, I believe. Do you know if that house was abandoned, or was that, um?
That was, uh, I just got back to work, so I didn't go to that fire, I've been out several months, but I can, uh, I can get, uh, have them get an email answer back to you, if you want, if it was abandoned. You sure? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Name?
Um, anybody else from the community have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing, seeing none, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, uh, we have the, uh, Board of Water Supply, Dominic?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's see. Looking back at the month of February, there were three main breaks in the valley, so February seventh, uh, fronting thirty-one sixty-one Wood Lawn Drive, six inch main. February twenty-second, an eight, eight inch main fronting thirty-four oh one eighty drive. And on February twenty-eighth, a fourteen inch main, fronting nineteen thirty-seven Kekela Drive. So all three mains were replaced, or the brakes were repaired and fixed back in service. Uh, just a quick general announcement, the Board of Water Supply, along with other city agencies, is observing the World Water Day, which is March twenty-second. The theme this year is water for peace. We encourage people to go to our website, BoardOfWaterSupply.com/WorldWaterDay, and we have, uh, some information there on climate change and impacts to water resources, uh, conservation tips, as well as, uh, stories and videos. Uh, inspiring stories and videos deals about water and sanitation crises around the world. So, some interesting information there, if anyone's interested. We are partnered in observing World Water Day with the Department of Environmental Services. No construction to report at this time, so at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply.
That was the board. Hearing and seeing none, members of the community? Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, next up, we have Kim Sparland, uh, Mayor Palagiadi's representative. Kim?
Good evening, I've missed you guys the last two months, I'm happy to be back. I'm happy to share some good news. I had followed up on the Manoa Stream overgrowth issue a couple times. Followed up again late last week, uh, to get a more updated answer and was told that there was scheduled for May. But I'm even happier to announce that we've gotten an updated report on that, thanks to Anson, Coley, and then, uh, Neighborhood Board staff. Um, they actually got an answer that could be as early as the end of this month, weather permitting. So I'm just gonna put that little bit of a caveat in there, right, given the rain that came through this evening, um, and earlier today. And so I will follow up and, on that again later this month and make sure that it's still on track, so that when we get together next month, I can say, yay, it's done, or hey, here's when it's gonna happen again. So just wanted you to know, still tracking that, that one. Um, also want you to know, Representative Garrett's been on it for you too, so. And as always, council members say, he's always on top of it, advocating for you guys through his channels. Um, other than that, I shared the mayor's newsletter, I apologize, we had an old link in here, um, his website has changed, so I, I put that updated newsletter in there. A couple of, um, high points that we want to share, on April twenty-fifth at six thirty PM at the Manoa District Park Gymnasium. Um, mayor is going to have his, uh, area town hall for this district. And so we're kicking those off again this year on March twenty-first, so next week, Friday, the fourteenth is the State of the City, it will be telecast, so you mark your calendars. Uh, I think it'll go live at six thirty on most of the major news channels. And then the following Thursday, for several weeks in a row, I think we end, um, at the beginning of June, we're gonna be going around the island doing the town halls, so we really encourage you to come out. Um, it's my understanding that we will also be broadcasting those live with coordination with Olelo, so keep your eyes out for that if you can't make it in person. Um, so again, that is April twenty-fifth, six thirty PM at the Manoa District Park Gymnasium. Um, we're also happy to say that the City Council at the end of February adopted the city's first climate adaptation strategy. I am gonna put that link, um, to the website for all of that information into the chat as well. Um, but just lots of good things, and I'm gonna do a little bit of self-promotion, even though that it's, it's not in the report. Um, the Office of Economic Revitalization officially publicly launched our Oahu Business Connector Program yesterday. We were able to finalize the last piece of our connector program and, and launch it as a comprehensive program supporting small businesses. Um, there's really six components to it frankly, uh, but the last, the last special piece that I think, uh, you guys would like to see, and again, I'll, I'll put that in the chat here in a minute, is a website, and what it does is it helps small businesses go in and say, hey, you know what, I, I need some assistance in, you know, finding access to capital, or I need assistance with business planning or marketing or something like that. And we have partners that are low to no cost. Um, we've identified about a hundred and thirty in the community, about a little over seventy of them have signed up so far. But you're able to, to drill down and say, hey, this is what I'm interested in, and it, it hones in on those service providers for you, so that you don't have to go through the madness of the internet, um, in order to do that. There's several other components to it, but I'm gonna not get too, uh, over glorifying of our own program here. Like I said, I'll put it into the chat so that you guys have it for the public record, and you guys can play around with OahuBusinessConnector.org. And other than that, I stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, members of the board, any questions for Kim? Members of the community, questions?
Kim, this is Brett Kershagay, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, absolutely, how are you?
Okay, Happy New Year, belated Happy New Year. Hey, um, I don't know, uh, back, but when you were last on the board meeting before the new year, um, I'd asked a question about the Manoa Banyan Court DEA, and, and when would it expire, because it was submitted over a year ago now? Okay. And then someone carried a response, but they didn't answer the question, you know, they gave us an update on what the status of the DEA was, but my, my question was really, you know, it's been over a year. Um, what, don't these things expire after a certain period of time? Anyway, that was my question, what's, when's the expiration date on that thing?
My, apologize, I will get, I will get that information, I apologize if that fell off the radar.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Sorry about that.
Nope, that's right. Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see hands raised. All right, Kim?
Thank you, everyone.
That's, oh, wait, Ellen has a question. Ellen?
Thank you. Kim, um, in, in the budget that was proposed for the city, there was money in there like, I don't know, sixty-three million or something for this Alawide Pedestrian Bridge or something? I thought that was supposed to be funded by federal money.
Um, you know, I'm gonna have to go look at that line item and see what that is specifically.
I just saw it on the news, I was really stunned because we certainly don't want the city to spend any money on that, I mean, if the feds are doing it and more better, you could come up with a simple design instead of some, something with a bunch of cables and, and supposed to look like a sail, and it looks like it belongs in Disneyland or Vegas or someplace. If we could have something simple, but certainly no mon, no money from the city spent on that. You know, I mean, if, if the feds gave you money, then use the feds' money, but not the city money, yeah, I mean, we got other priorities, yeah?
Sure, let me, um,
What's that?
I see another question there, but I was gonna say, I can, uh, you know, put myself on mute, let you guys move on and try and find, um, where that is and see if I, what I can dig up while we're still here on, on the line. I see another hand here.
Yes, uh, I see Laura Ruby's hand raised, in the meantime, though, real quickly, well, before you go, uh, Phil, your mics on, if you can, please mute yourself until you're ready to speak, we'd appreciate that. Laura, go ahead.
Yes, to follow up on what Ellen just said, um, uh, I, I will have something to say later in the Citizens Concerns. Um, the, uh, there has been no planning, and it will involve the city and county and our taxpayer dollars, because all of the maintenance, all of the security, all of the police force, all of the comfort station rebuilding, all of that will come out of our taxpayer dollars, which will be city and county dollars. So that they are completely, um, um, not presenting that to the public. That's what's happening now, and I absolutely agree with whatever, everything that Ellen is saying, but also have things more to say, um, at the Citizens Concerns, thank you.
Can I just clarify my understanding, or maybe confirm my understanding, that you're saying that there's been no planning, there's gonna be additional cost to the city based on this Alawide Pedestrian Bridge?
Huge, huge, huge cost on both sides of the canal.
Okay, let me see what I can dig up.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else with hands raised? Hearing and seeing none. Kim, thanks very much.
I'm, I'm gonna stay on, like I said, I'm gonna try and see what I can find out and, uh, and hopefully get just some answers here today.
Sounds good, appreciate that. Um, moving next, just a heads up, we do have the Democratic primaries tonight. At the same time that we're doing our board presentation, so a lot of the following people may not be present at this time. Uh, as council members say here, or somebody from his office?
Hello, everyone, this is Paul from Councilmember Say's office, I hope everybody's going, uh, doing well and staying dry. Um, council member apologizes that he couldn't make the meeting tonight, so I'm here in his stead. Um, I wanted to just give a few quick announcements, um, we never had a chance to, uh, give the announcements last month, but there was a few things that, um, happened during Jan, uh, early February and also January. Um, the cherry blossom tree Hawaiian journey with planting in Manoa. So there was, um, a couple of cuttings that came through to, that's also, that is actually planted in, um, Manoa, um, Manoa Park. The passage of a voyage unique, um, can be more fulfilling than a journey complete. Um, years of international collaboration to establish thriving cherry blossom trees in the Hawaiian Islands continues with this twenty-third donated sakura ceremoniously planted in two city parks this week. So this was in January. Um, the Honolulu Parks, Department Parks and Recreation and the Mayor's Office of Cultural and Art Staff was joined by the Honolulu City and Council members, um, and the Hawaii Sakura Foundation, representatives of Co-Chief Prefectur Makino, uh, Botanical Garden to plant the trees gifted by the two latter organizations in Iliahi Neighborhood Park at Manoa Valley District Park. Along with the strengthening of the international ties, these plantings will further determine the best variety of iconic trees suitable for Hawaii's tropical conditions. The second one was, uh, Manoa Elementary School, uh, was recognized by the Honolulu City Council. They were honored, um, winning first place for the American Savings Bank Sixth Annual Bank of, Bank for Education Kiki Coal Business Plan Competition in, um, in, for their, for their school, um, in the elementary division. All the young lady teams won twenty-five thousand dollars for the school, and each winning team member received an individual cash bonus of up to five hundred dollars. And, um, Councilman Say is very proud of this team and has a bright future, there's a bright future for them. Um, the Kerb Wrap Project, the Department of Design and Construction announced the Kerb Wrap Project on Oahu will begin on Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through July twenty twenty-four. Work is ex, work is expected to run on weekdays from eight thirty AM to three thirty PM, excluding holidays. The curbs that are affected are the following. Varsity Place and University Avenue, South King Street and University Avenue. Um, I do also have the, um, the monthly, his monthly, uh, newsletter in the chat and any other important, um, links there, I actually put them in the chat. Um, I do have some, um, follow-ups from, um, concerns that we had. Um, I believe it was January, um, so Feral, end of February. Feral chickens, uh, Mayor, Member Chong requested assistance to remove the feral chickens from the Kauai Hau Cemetery across from the Manoa Theater. Um, I received a, um, response back from the Department of Customer Services, and they said the city's feral chickens control vendor is unable to remove the feral chickens from private property unless a private property owner directly retains the vendor's services. The vendor's services are partially, uh, they partially pay, it's partially paid by the city for a discounted price, uh, to the property owner. And then is, um, member Lumen on? Does anybody know? Okay, um, Chucks, uh, we've been wanting to ask him, he requested a rental credit. Um, it was a few months ago, I, I wanna say it was in November, he requested an increase in rental credit for more than sixty dollars a year. We need to ask more information from him in order for the Department of Fiscal Services to find out, um, in a little bit more detail of what he's requesting. So, um, if anybody sees him from now until our next meeting, um, could you please let him know that, um, we need more information? Um, and then, I believe that is it, I am, I am open to any questions.
Thank you very much, uh, I see Member Chong has her hand raised first.
Okay.
I, um, okay, so the, the cemetery is owned by who? Who would own it?
So, apparently it is the area that where the feral chickens are, they, it's considered private property, the Kauai Hau Cemetery. So the owners of them, they would have, we would have to find out who they are, and they would have to agree to have the vendor come on their property to, um, to, to help with the feral chickens.
Where would I find information like something like that?
So that would be, um, you can do one or two things, um, we can, you could get it through the Department of Plin, uh, Planning and Permitting. Um, you can find out, you know, the Google, the Google map of the Kauai Hau Cemetery and then find out what the TMK is and then we can find out who the owners are. And then we can request, uh, the owners to, um, you can request the owners to see if they can work with the, um, vendor from the Department of Customer Services that handles the feral chickens.
Okay, but you don't have the owner's name, is that correct?
I do not. Um, I can get it for you if you want me to and see who, um, I would need to speak to in regards to, um, finding out if they're willing to work with the department, um, if there is a concern, um, within the neighborhood area that they would have to maybe talk to, uh, the Kauai Hau Cemetery themselves. Uh, but if not, then I can find that out for you, no problem.
Okay. The other question I have is, um, the cherry blossoms, do you know where they're located in Manoa?
Yeah, so actually, right, I actually was there for the, um, for the initial, um, ceremony. So if you go down all the way like where the dogs are, it's the very, very last part of the area of Manoa District Park. So you pass the schools, you pass the tennis courts, it's all at the bottom of the corner where there's, uh, residential housing area. That's, it should be, um, let me see. It's considered, the area is called, um, Ili'ahie? The Ili'ahie Park? So that's like where, uh, I've seen a lot of, um, the, it like, it's kind of like a open dog park where people come and let their dogs free roam over there, but it's at the end of the pathway. And that's where the cherry blossoms were.
And how large are they? Are they big or are they small?
Um, they're probably about, I wanna say about three feet. So they're not super big, they're still sampling, so they're, you know, they were just transported from Japan.
Very tiny.
Yeah, so they're very tiny. Yeah, they're not massive.
Hey, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Watson?
I wanted to let you know that there's three feral chickens at Manoa District Park.
Okay.
Uh, by the Kahaloa entrance, running around in the parking lot and certainly that is city. So maybe you can deal with it. And the other suggestion I had for by the, um, uh, place where Diane's talking about, by the cemetery there, um, you know, I mean, there's space between the sidewalk and the street that you can put cages that belongs to the city. And if you put bait in there, the chickens will come to feed and you can catch the chickens and never go on the cemetery property. So, you know, I think you could do something like that.
Sidewalk or like an inlet in between the cemetery, is that because there's city, the, is it like a sidewalk or is it a, what?
Yeah, exactly. There's a sidewalk there and there's a space between the sidewalk and the curb. And if, if you put down chicken feed, you know, you ought to be able to catch them because they'll walk off the cemetery property to eat your buffet.
Yeah, I would have to find out how the process of what, how the vendor does it, because he does, what usually happens is the Department of Customer Services, you would call them, and they have one specific vendor that they go to for the city and county. They're the only one that is approved right now, it's one vendor. And they actually go and do the chicken, um, chicken maintenance, I would say.
Right, um, so it's like a sole source, uh, sole source vendor that you pick and I'm sure they bait them and catch them in traps and then either make huli-huli chicken or take them to the main site or whatever they do with them. But anyway.
Sometimes, uh, from what I'm told, they do relocate them to other places and sometimes, I mean, I'm not sure what they do when they, when they capture the, the feral chickens, but, um,
Yeah, it doesn't really matter, but anyway, there's three chickens at Manoa District Park in the parking lot, so.
Yeah.
Maybe you can deal with those.
Sure.
Well, I can, well, I can take that on as well. I've, I've noted that.
Okay, mahalo.
Yeah.
Uh, Laura?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I, uh, I might have a specific question to ask him, but uh, specifically about the chickens, I have captured eight chickens in the Mo'ili'i Japanese Cemetery. We have a chicken trap, but you can get, uh, bird netting at City Mill and put little fishing weights on them and people who know how to throw them, you just throw them over the chicken, you grab them. And I've located the three chickens to the Manoa Stream. So you can do it yourself and no problem. It's so easy to do. So go ahead with that. Uh, Kim, um, I, um, would like to ask you, is Calvin Say gonna run again or not? Where is the definitive answer? Because we're gearing up for the, um, um, time in which, um, the campaign is gonna go on.
So in regards to, um, boss.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's Pua, I'm sorry, excuse me.
In regards to him rerunning, at the moment, he is, um, he is actually um, going through some, some testing, some medical testing, because he wants to make sure with his doctor that he's good to go. Um, because he, he just wanted to make sure that, you know, he's ready because, you know, being a council member, he has a lot of responsibilities and he wants to look at, you know, the, the long term for all the communities that he, he's responsible for and also Oahu and beyond. So right now, um, at this moment.
Sorry, this is Janelle, this is, yeah, except right now, he's planning to run, um, and, uh, pending, pending any uh, health reasons that he wouldn't be able to, but as of right now, he's planning to run.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's see, anybody else from the community? Ring, seeing none. Pua, thank you very much.
Be on for the rest of the, uh, meeting as well, if you guys have any questions or concerns. Mahalo.
Sounds good. Uh, let's see. Senator Fukunaga or somebody from her office? Hearing, oh, it's, oh, Senator Fukunaga.
Uh huh.
Hi, wow, I'm, I'm grateful that you're able to join us on such a busy night, considering what the caucus is going on.
We had so many, uh, uh, very controversial issues coming before the State Senate, uh, yesterday that I did wanna make a brief appearance and, you know, um, share a little bit of the background with respect to some of the, um, confirmation votes that we, um, went through during yesterday's, um, third reading deadline period. Uh, for those of you who have received copies of my, uh, report to the Neighborhood Board, I had initially, um, voted to support Chair Kim in not recommending, um, Chair Nahalea's appointment to the Board of Regents, uh, because the, uh, testimonies were kind of split, you know, both ways, support and opposition. And part of what was interesting to me is most of the opposition was coming from students. So, uh, I did that and immediately after that, I received an overwhelming outpouring of, uh, support and comments from people within Senate District eleven. I was kind of surprised because normally I, I don't really receive a lot of comments regarding, uh, confirmation votes. It's usually more on bills, but this was really kind of a, a surprising, uh, outcome and, you know, in, in talking with many individuals, including, um, you know, someone who was the prior chair of the Board of Regents. It really appeared that, um, the, um, nominee had very strong support, both from the community as well as from within the, uh, university system. And so I was very disappointed that, uh, we were not able to, um, confirm him as, um, a regent nominee for the new term. However, it was a very, uh, instructive experience. We also had, uh, nominee, uh, as a nominee, former Governor Abercrombie. And, uh, it was kind of surprising to me that, you know, he also had a number of, uh, opposition testimonies and those were mainly from students. So in talking with, um, both former Governor Abercrombie and the students, uh, he kind of, uh, realized that some of his, uh, you know, ebullient personalities and sometimes, uh, very strong comments tend to really put people off and, you know, in his role as a regent, he really, uh, agreed that, you know, he needs to be very fair and very, um, open to hear from all points of view. So I think in that instance, uh, he really did try to respond very quickly to many of the, uh, opposition comments. So his confirmation, you know, did ultimately, um, prevail. I think for, the thing that was also very interesting is we have had a lot of monster home experiences over the last ten years, particularly in older neighborhoods. So, um, Senate Bill three-two-oh-two, uh, I looked at the, uh, materials that were provided to us by the Good Neighbor Network and they had really pointed out that in the last DPP annual report, there are several thousands of permitted and approved housing, um, projects that have not yet either been built or completed in central as well as, um, central Oahu as well as the Eva area. And that rather than trying to increase density within single-family residential neighborhoods, we should really be looking to help address building those permitted housing projects first because they would amount to almost twenty-five thousand or more units if we were able to actually get them off the ground. Uh, I also highlighted some of the, uh, positive things that we, uh, tackled yesterday. And I would say among some of those were some innovative projects that UH, uh, is undertaking with federal grants, uh, for a wildfire forecast system as well as developing wildfire sus- um, susceptibility maps. And I think if the state pitches in and provides additional funding, this is where, this is really a demonstration of where universities, um, University of Hawaii's Citar expertise in wildfire management as well as College of Engineering and Water Resource, uh, Water Research and Resource Center can play a much bigger role in helping us tackle and overcome some of these kinds of climate change hazards. And so beyond that, I'm happy to take any questions, but, um, it has been a very, uh, um, busy and intense last, uh, two weeks. And so it's good to see the board members, you all look well and, um, I hope that we will be looking forward to some exciting things with the next round of bills.
Thank you very much, Senator. Um, I actually have a question first off. What is your position regarding House Bill twenty-six-sixty-four regarding the, uh, proposal to, um, end development of the stadium off in Halava where the old stadium used to be and expanding Qingfield at University of Hawaii?
Well, um, as one who is kind of familiar with a lot of the underground carsts in the Makali Mo'ili'i area, as we have done a lot of research in the Alawai watershed over the last ten or more years. Uh, I don't know how much more capacity, you know, Qingfield and UH has in the old quarry area. I think, you know, it's worth, um, investigating further. I, I think the University of Hawaii is also very um, reluctant to take on additional maintenance responsibilities when they do have major backlogs, you know, at this time. However, um, you know, it's, it's crossed over to the Senate and, um, to me, you always wanna take a fresh look at some of these issues and see whether there's new information that we should be applying.
Thank you. And in my per- in my personal capacity, I would like to voice my opposition to that bill, especially because of what you just described with the issues with the, um, the capacity at University of Hawaii. I, my concerns is the expansion. We already have a lot of issues with traffic as well as, uh, concerns and just being able to expand upon that and also the time that we've already invested into planning and trying to come up with, trying to get that project going as well. I feel it's best that we try to move forward with that versus trying to scrap everything that's been done at this point and already, and start on something that might not even be feasible.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I see, uh, Member Bolso has her hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Senator, I was wondering if you could comment three-two-oh-two, you mentioned that you, um, you know, you had received opposition. Is the status of that, that it's, uh, passed through the Senate now?
It did pass the Senate. There were five of us who voted in opposition. There were several, um, what is it, uh, WR, you know, votes. And the companion measure has now arrived in the Senate. So I think we're gonna be working more closely with a lot of members to, you know, kind of share information about the large number of approved but unbuilt projects that we have currently on Oahu and that we should be perhaps, you know, directing our efforts to help make those projects viable or to help those projects get off the ground before we try to, you know, make further changes in older neighborhoods. Because one of the things that we certainly discovered, you know, um, was very unfortunate over the last decade is that instances where people were developing what we called monster homes in older neighborhoods really stressed the prevailing or the underlying infrastructure, you know, whether they were roadways, uh, sewers, waters and in instances like in, um, Punch Bowl, Pacific Heights, um, certainly in Leleha. In the case of, uh, properties that were completely razed and, you know, a lot more concrete put on the, I guess, on the, um, on the parcel. All of a sudden, people around that parcel began to experience drainage and other kinds of, um, you know, flooding, excess rainwater, et cetera, types of issues. And so, you know, for the individual who thinks that they're doing something positive, oftentimes that comes with a lot of consequences that weren't anticipated. So definitely Senate Bill three-two-oh-two and House Bill sixteen-thirty are on our watch list. And I do, um, uh, encourage the Neighborhood Board to take a closer look at the, um, DPP annual report. I'm happy to, uh, forward it to the Chair and have, you know, him distribute it to the members because it was very surprising to me that such a large number of authorized but unbuilt projects are still pending.
Yes, thank you. Um, and I, I guess my, a- as you mentioned, the sort of concomitant effects on the neighboring properties. I mean, this seems to relate to what, um, Kim was mentioning earlier, this, you know, this new climate resilience Oahu package that I'm sure they spent lots of time and energy, um, you know, putting together. I looked through it, it's like basically, let's educate people about the need to do things about the climate. One of the main things that the city try, or this, I think the city tried to do a while ago was the, you know, stormwater runoff issues about impervious surfaces on residential properties and the relationship to, you know, flash flooding and, and neighboring runoffs. And then to propose a bill like, as, you know, three-two-oh-two seems to go against all of this work that the city is trying to do. Not to mention just where, where does development, you know, um, where can the infrastructure and the various types of infrastructure handle it? It just seems like it's shooting yourself in the foot to then mandate this increase in density across the board, you know, regardless of capacity or zoning or any, any other consideration. So that's my personal feeling. I, I think it's an extremely problematic, um, bill. So thank you for your, your efforts ag- against it.
Thank you.
Member Fox has his hand raised. Robert, you're still muted.
Yeah, sorry, had to hit that button. I retired full-time to my home in Manoa a year and a half ago. I've been on an island since nineteen seventy-six. I've gotta tell you, folks, the big problem that we have here in Hawaii is preventing the bad policy of California to infiltrate this island. They did all this stuff in California, it was called SB nine and SB ten, where they started out with four units on a lot. By the time they were done, it was challenged in court and you could subdivide that into eight units on a lot. It will happen here if they allow one bill to pass. We have so much to prevent. You know, the pendulum has swung too far to one side. I'm a moderate. I'm a Democrat and a proud Democrat. But I'm not stupid. I'm a, I'm a moderate, common sense person. And we have issues here on this island, particularly about our quality of life, one of which is we have to think about how much water do we have? How many people can we sustain? If we keep building on this island? If we keep throwing population at this island, allow everybody in here who wants to be in here. God, how kind of us. We are twelve percent sustainable at this point in food. We have no water. The Halava aquifer has been compromised. Manoa's aquifer has not been accessed yet. But it was given a hundred years ago. We have no facility to handle this kind of density here on this island. I've been in City Council. I have been on every commission there could possibly be in the Long Beach, California area. And I've got to tell you something, folks. If we do not stop this now, the results will be disastrous. As it has been in Seattle, in Portland, in San Francisco. And in Los Angeles and Long Beach, and God forbid, it's happening in San Diego now. Do you want to look like California? Because I hope you don't. This is the last bastion of moderate, common sense liberality. And we must protect it.
And you have objection from me.
Well, thank you. I, I don't know what you can do to put together a meeting. Where we can talk passionately about what the problem of California is and do you want to recreate that here?
Well, I think if, if there's a group that is interested in sharing, you know, your uh experience and perspectives. With the housing chairs of both the House and Senate, I think that would be valuable. Because there are many young people who are following the legislation. And believing that, you know, opening up more neighborhoods will be the um, you know, the way to go. But. You know, I, I don't think they realize that for many older neighborhoods. The city has not been able to keep up with uh infrastructure repairs. And so if you look across most of the valleys, you know, Manoa, Palolo, uh, what is it? Kalihie Valley, Leleha, et cetera. Many of the um streets, the water systems, sewer systems. Are all in um, you know, somewhat precarious position because they're not. They have not been upgraded for a long time. And, you know, at least the city has been able to uh do a great job. In the areas that transit is supposed to travel through. However, the older neighborhoods are still very, very vulnerable. And, you know, I think we need to protect them.
I appreciate that, Senator. One of the things that bothers me is that we have not yet codified in law. Um. Traffic, uh, what is it called? Transit density issue. What that means is if a bus can go by fifteen minutes every hour on the hour, minutes. You can build a development in California with no parking at all. You all know how difficult it is in this particular state to have parking to even park near your condominium, let alone your apartment. If we allow this to happen here. We, if you think traffic is bad now, if you think things are bad now, just wait. In ten years, it'll be absolutely unsustainable. P.S. I was head of the zoning department of Long Beach and guess what I found out? After these things were built. It was never built for people who needed housing, low income people. The developers only built for high end. Ninety-five percent of the housing that we allowed, eight units on a lot. Went to high end development, high end rent, high end everything. People made fortunes on them. If we haven't learned the lesson from monster homes. And these were people who just wanted to make money. I have a monster home right next to my house. Oh, it was going to be for an extended Chinese family. Bullshit. It's an apartment building, seventeen rooms, seventeen baths, seventeen kitchens. And it's apartment building. And I've called Calvin Say a thousand times and that creep. Will never do anything about it. Because he's so worried about getting, getting elected by whatever money is paying him. It's ridiculous.
Robert?
This is politics. I'm sorry I'm so rude, but you know what? We've got to get to the bottom of this stuff and stop this before it happens.
Well, I encourage you to participate in some of the hearings, but um in the meantime. You know, certainly if there's a group of uh individuals who would like to meet with the housing chairs. I'm happy to work with um Representative Garrett and Representative Bellotti and try and set something up.
I'll be glad to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the community? Hearing, seeing none. Senator, thank you so much for your time. Uh, we, we really do appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns tonight.
Thank you. Aloha.
Now, Representative Garrett contacted me just before the meeting started and he said that he is at the um. Democrat, at the uh Democratic Caucus right now um for our. For our area. So if there's anybody from his office. No, I don't see anybody chiming in. Uh, Elmer, University of Hawaii? Elmer is not anywhere in University of Hawaii here? No. Um, do we have Governor Josh Green's representative here? Lacy? Uh, you're still muted somehow. I'm not hearing you. No, still can't hear you. You're unmuted. I see that, but you're. Sorry, I'm soon to put it for you.
All right, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I'm sorry about that. So just a couple of highlights from um the governor's newsletter. So in February. Uh, the Green Administration opens um two more Koholei, one in Kanihohe and another in Honolulu. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight from the newsletter um was on February twentieth. Governor Josh Green signs an executive order declaring Hawaii a trauma-informed state. Um, so feedback from community members statewide. Uh, will be used to create reports to inform and improve local programs and policies. Um, so for more information, you can visit health-study dot com. Um, and then other than that, I can put the uh link to that as well as the newsletter in the chat. And happy to stay on for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, any questions for Governor Green's representative? Hearing none. Members of the community? Hearing and seeing none for now. Lacy, thank you for your time. And looking forward to keeping you on while we discuss further issues. Uh, do we have Julia from Congressman Case's office? Julia?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair Zane and members of the board. Um, just wanted to give a little update on what's happening in DC. Um, today, the US House approved a mini bus. Um, that includes six out of the twelve appropriation bills. And I've posted that press release in the chat. Um, and in regard to Manoa, Congressman Case uh submitted a CPF request. Um, for nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars um for UH's Department of Public Safety. Um, Community Safety Network Integration. Um, there's more details on that press release on that program. And as always, Congressman Case's website is a great place to go um. For latest information and any assistance requests. Um, and I did share this last time as well, but I put in his uh quarterly report that details a little more. About um his DC and Honolulu um actions. And lastly, I wanted to share um the Congressional Art Competition. Um, that's currently underway and those art pieces. Um, if you folks had know any high schoolers, um, those are to be submitted. By April eighteenth to the Honolulu office. And then. Of course, if, if anyone has anything they'd like me to take back, um, I'm happy to and. My email is there as well, so feel free to, to connect with me. That's all for me.
Thank you very much, Julia. Members of the board, any questions? I'm not seeing any, so I'll turn to Laura.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I'd like to know, um, Ed Case has made a point of saying that he is part of the. Uh, problem solvers in the uh, the Congress. Um, is anything actually happening with them or is it real she-bye? Because they were, the immigration bill that was set up in the Senate should have come across the House and been passed. And if it was an actual group that was doing an effective work, they should have prevailed upon people. To bring enough people to uh bear on the um uh Senate leader, I mean, the rep, uh, the House leader. To bring it to uh focus. Has that happened yet? Where, where is that? Where is the problem solvers and how effective is Ed Case in that? Thank you.
Yes, so the Problem Solvers Caucus is a bipartisan effort in terms of the immigration efforts. Um, I can happily get you a full, um, I guess synopsis of, of what's going on and. I can share that either to your email or to Chair Zane and have it dispersed accordingly. Um, but it definitely is, is an effort in Congress.
Oh, and just also give a heads up on this Laura. Even one rep is, as much as we appreciate Congressman Case's work on this stuff. Um, even the Problem Solvers Caucus sometimes isn't up against, especially when there's uh, he's in the minority technically, even though it's a minority of. Only one vote at this point with Congress. So even though it's a minority of one, he's still in the minority and it's up to the um. Head, um, the, I think it's Representative Johnson, who is the one who's currently uh Chair of the House and. It's his prerogative to put things on the agenda at times. So. Even with the best of the Problem Solvers Caucus, sometimes when they hit a stubborn road, road wall. It's a wall, which is why you, if you don't like their policies, go out and vote and. Make your voices heard through the vote, even especially if it's like with reliving Case or somebody else who you feel represents your interests. Uh, member Fox, you have your hand raised. Robert, you're muted.
Sorry, I always like to be polite. So I would like to make a request of uh Ed Case. Uh, we have declared a homeless emergency here on island. And I know everybody's working really, really hard on this. They're under the wrong assumption that housing first is the right policy. The biggest issue, and I was very much involved with homeless issues in the city of Long Beach, California. I created the Multi Service Center for the Homeless. When you're homeless, after about six months, you start losing stuff like ID and. Documentation passports, whatever. Unfortunately, what we found is there is no communication between the federal government, the state, the county and the city. Even in California. It takes nine months with somebody dedicated twenty-four hours a day to figure out. How to get your ID back. You don't get any benefits. What if, and if the homeless person is a, a vet. But they don't know how to access veteran services without an ID, we can't get that. Could you please ask Edward Case? If he would be willing to set up a task force to investigate the connectivity. Between federal, state, county and local government. So that we can facilitate. The granting of ID again and our homeless populations that can start to solve this issue. Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's definitely a great point. Um, we do offer casework services here in the Honolulu office. Um, so if anybody knows any individuals that are having difficulty acquiring forms of identification. Um, we do work with um agencies like the DMV or more on a federal scale as well. So. Um, we can help connect individuals and get them um knowledgeable of the.
That's not the issue, Julia, and I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's not the problem. It's like when we're dealing with a homeless population, number one, eighty-five percent of them are mentally challenged at this point. And I'd be mentally challenged too if I were six months on the street. The question that I, that I'm trying to raise here is it's not about referring me to another agency. None of these agencies are connected. So when we send people to Homeless Services Authority here or Section Eight Housing Authority. The question of getting identification is a federal one. It's not a state, it's not a city issue. We can issue all kinds of library cards. But we cannot issue federal passports. And without the correct identification, particularly for those who are veterans homeless on the street. I need a con- connectivity there. So I'm, it's a different question that I'm asking. It's not about, oh, you can refer me to this because we already tried that. There's twenty-three service agencies here in Honolulu. None of them speak with each other. There's no connectivity at all. There is no program to connect any of these agencies or service agencies. What I'm asking Ed to do is, if he, he's a brilliant guy, you know? This is a brilliant question and it's national. Every city in America has this problem. Could we open up? A task force. To make a connectivity between federal, state, county and municipality. So that when somebody registers anywhere. That it goes in a direct line of communication and they can actually get identification. So you can give them the services. Which they actually are owed. I pay taxes, I'm happy to pay for the homeless. I, all of us are happy to have other people. But we can't, if they can't get the services without ID, they can't. That was my question. That's my ask.
Of course, yeah, I think I have a better understanding now. Yeah, so with, with the casework, we, we work directly with the constituent. Um, and we kind of facilitate that. Um, but in terms of increasing connectivity between. Um, federal, state, local agencies, it, it definitely is an, you know, an issue. We want to streamline that process as much as we can. So. I'll, I'll happily take that back to Congressman Case and, you know, pass it along that this is, this is of, you know, utmost importance that. All of these agencies are, are connected in a way that works for constituents. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. I really appreciate. This is a national issue. And I think that Ed would be a great hero in this nation if he can facilitate that kind of. Particularly in this new age connectivity. I'd appreciate that.
Members of the community, anybody else? I am not seeing anybody else. Julia, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point. I'm going to see if there is um a quorum before we move on to the next portion. Um, Anson, can you do another roll call, please, to see if we have quorum?
Um, Watson?
President?
Uh, Bolso? Uh, Nagaji?
Here.
Elton?
Here.
Lumen? Uh, Lee?
Oh, no.
Here, sorry.
Here.
Okay. Lee? Okay, here.
Here.
Tom? Tom? Is Chong here?
Did you say Chong?
Yes.
Hello?
Uh, Coff? Coff? Uh, Moyland?
Here.
Uh, Kwanu? Kwanu? And Fox. And next again.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like you do. Yep, uh, we do make quorum.
Thank you very much. Um, in which case, first thing with quorum, um. As mentioned previously, one group that wanted to present tonight, Ikina Care regarding the project. Was not included on the agenda, which was my mistake. I do apologize for that. I will lay the board's permission and vote.
Oh, wait, uh. Um, sorry, Anson. Yeah, uh, we need to third vote in order to add something to the agenda. And due to the fact that Patty is not here and um. And due to the fact that Patty is not here and um Joanne, uh, we can't add anything to the the agenda. So we have to just wait, uh, postpone it to next month.
And you need twelve votes.
Yeah, we need twelve votes. Yes.
Add it, we've only got ten.
Only got ten?
Yeah, we only have ten.
Shit. Oh. Hey, um, whoever just scored.
However, Robert, they could present or do something during community concerns.
Yes, that's, they can do that.
That category, so they can make their presentation there. So if we just get through this resolution and this other stuff, then we can get to community concerns, they can present them.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go with that plan for now then. Thank you very much for that. Uh, in which case, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the proposed resolution opposing Senate Bill Three Two Zero Two and House Bill One Six Three Zero. So let me see if I can share that with everybody on the board. Let me see if I can bring this up.
Chris, has his hand up?
Oh, um.
Wait, so you?
No.
Is this your resolution, Robert?
No, this resolution was, oh, hello?
Hi, this is Christine Otto Zaa from High Good Neighbor.
Yes, Christine, um.
I I actually worked with Vanessa de Stahoe on this um to introduce this resolution, which Kamaki Neighborhood Board and Huaikai Neighborhood Board also passed. Um, and then Kuleo O and Kailua is also hearing a measure before their boards tomorrow.
Okay, great. So um if, in which case then, if you could, um, I'm gonna try to share the screen right now and see if um if you'd be willing to speak regarding that.
Yes.
Wait, Chair Zane? Did someone send me this so I could distribute it to the board?
Um, it's been uploaded to the shared drive.
Oh, okay.
Um, does any, does anybody see the uh the resolution in front of you?
Yep.
Right, so um, real quickly, I'm going to um read the, be it result, the, well, I'll read the resolution in its entirety first real quickly. Um, Chris, if you can then make comments regarding it.
Okay.
And then we're gonna be up for discussion. So first off.
Um, Chair Zane, uh, which uh is in the correct drive in March?
Should be in March twenty twenty-four regarding, um, it's a word document in there.
It's got PDFs in it.
Um, in the meantime, um, if we can first.
Oh, sorry.
No, if we could just go through this now, Anson. So I want to read the resolution now. Whereas members of the Manoa community have long raised concerns about the impacts of monster homes have had and continue to have on their community. And whereas monster homes are defined as apartment buildings disguised as homes in our residential neighborhoods. And monster houses have proliferated in our older working-class neighborhoods like Manoa, Kamaki, Kaliki, Kapahulu, and Palolo because of the density allowed on R three point five and R five zoning lots. And whereas monster homes often feature concrete pin-to-pin, which heats up our neighborhoods, increases flooding, and destroys our natural beauty. And whereas monster houses are devoid of green space that is characteristic of our older neighborhoods. And whereas monster houses exacerbate parking problems and traffic congestion, particularly in older neighborhoods with now roadways and non-existent sidewalks. And whereas monster houses increase neighborhood density, noise, and runoff. Whereas proponents of monster houses continue to push for legislation such as SB Three Two Oh Two and HB One Six Three Zero, which allow for the construction of monster houses that adversely impact communities and the development of three or more homes per twelve hundred or two thousand square foot lot in our neighborhoods. And for the subdivision of parcels with a minimum lot size of twelve hundred or two thousand square feet in the state urban land use district. And whereas Manoa Neighborhood Board Number Seven opposes legislation or policies that would override county authority in determining where density should increase. Be resolved, Manoa Neighborhood Board Seven opposes legislation or policies that would allow for the development of three or more dwelling units on residential lots thirty-five hundred square feet or less and the subdivision of lots to thirty-five hundred square feet or less on any lot for residential in Manoa. And be it further resolved, that content of this resolution be sent to the following government officials, Governor of State Hawaii, each member of the state ledge, Mayor of City and County of Honolulu, Honolulu City Council members, Director of Department of Planning and Performing, and the chairs of the Wahoo Neighborhood Board System. Chris?
Okay.
Yes, so um, our group High Good Neighbor has worked with many Manoa residents over the years, including Malama Manoa and Outdoor Circle Manoa on monster house issues for years. Um, and so I, we wanted to bring this bill to your attention just because it's been fast-tracked in the legislature. Um, and it would have more devastating consequences than monster homes. Um, for example, there's a nineteen thousand square foot lot on Sierra Drive that the city recently revoked permits for. That lot can currently have five homes on it. This bill would allow that lot to be subdivided into eight parcels and have three homes on each, or, I'm excuse, excuse me, nine parcels with three homes on it, um, resulting in twenty-seven homes. So five versus twenty-seven um means a lot more density that especially our older neighborhoods can't sustain. So I'm hoping you guys will support the resolution and it sounds like based on prior discussions that um you may. So thank you.
You, and opening up for discussion regarding this resolution. Members of the board? Ellen?
My hands up, Robert.
Ellen, go, go ahead.
Okay, um, I think for one thing, the title should say, Resolution Opposing uh Bit Senate Bill Thirty Two Oh Two and House Bill, um, whatever it is, Sixteen Thirty, um, listed in the title because it's a resolution opposing those bills, right? And then, um, I'm just concerned about us calling them monster homes because four or five or twenty little, you know, starter homes on a lot, maybe all piled together would be considered a monster house. But a monster house is one building that's kind of built like a condo, but still called a house, right? So I don't really understand why there's all these whereas monster houses do this and monster houses do that. And these bills are talking about subdividing lots and allowing starter homes to be, or homes to be on those lots. And I I support opposing these bills. This is terrible to divide lots and subdivisions into this. But I don't know that you can, that you call it, call them a monster house.
Okay, um, am I hearing uh opposed amendment to change the, to remove overdescend Manoa neighborhoods and replacing it with Senate Bill Three Two Zero Two and House Bill Sixteen Thirty? And do you have any other additional amendments regarding the changing of the term monster houses? You have more time to think about that.
Yeah, maybe somebody else knows a different wording or something, what should be in there, yeah?
Okay, so at this, so probably just changing your, uh, you're requesting an amendment for this title only did you change to opposing Senate Bill Three Two Zero Two and House Bill Sixteen Thirty?
Well, I, I'm, I'm requesting the amendment for the change of that and I'm up for suggestions. Um, because we're talking about monster homes and really we're talking about the division of properties to have many homes, little homes on them. So, uh, Robert, Fox, maybe you have what the language should be.
Yes, I actually, if I could speak to this, I've worked with Christine Otis A on the monster home issue with uh the Good Neighbor Group and Tyler Santos and many others. And we were fierce. Uh, God bless Linda LaGrand and Nancy Caraway, who had the patience to put up with me going down to the Frank Fossey Building and pulling all the paperwork. Our efforts were amazing. But Ellen has a point here. This is not about monster homes. This is about high density. Now, monster homes represent high density. If I might make an amendment to the resolution, it's nice to say whereas blah, 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 monster homes. If you could put in there which represent high density, that may solve the issue because what we're talking about is a similar is, similar situation, but the issue is the same and that is high density, right? So in California, when we, we unfortunately got SB Nine and SB Ten, the, the cumulative effect upon the infrastructure of cities that bought into this garbage were that they didn't have water. They had flooding because the storm drains could not handle the load. The house behind my house, by the way, is completely cemented over. Every time it rains, now Miley Way is flooded with six inches deep of rain, in a normal rain. When it's a high, high rain, the house below this house floods. And they've hired attorneys already to sue the owner of this crazy person, but the owner is in Shanghai, China. I think what we need to talk about is representing high density and in the same breath oppose this high-density proposal on the basis that we simply cannot handle the density. We understand that housing is an issue and we want to show compassion for people. On the other hand, building high density with no provision whatsoever for mandating low income and PS, they changed the rules on low income. So low income, what you and I are thinking about is not what they're defining low income as. Low income now is eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Most of my friends don't make eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Modern income is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. These issues are important because the legislature changed the definitions on us.
Right, there's nothing even about low income. Income, it's about density, right?
It's about density, but if you want to add density, then let's not add density for high-income property. Let's add density for very, very, very low-income property.
Oh, hold on.
And do any density.
I, I think. Re- Ellen?
I just don't think.
Pause for a second. I just want to, because of the time constraints here, I would like to clarify if what the exact language you would like to suggest uh amend the, the resolution to include at this point.
I would like to amend it to include represent high-density housing. You can keep the monster home in there, but it has to be as representing high density because that's really what the issue is here.
Okay.
Is that make, does that become acceptable to you folks?
Well, hold on. I mean, and just to clarify as well, this, your proposal for the inclusion of the language of high-density housing is going to go into paragraph two of, uh, the second whereas, which defines what a monster hu- monster house is in this resolution. Okay.
Right.
Now, the other thing also is that.
But you know, it's also in paragraph, let me see, one, uh, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight
Obeying.
of this resolution. And what I'm, what I'm saying is defining monster homes doesn't really apply to this legislation. Identity applies to this resolution. So if you want to just say monster home, example of.
High density instead of monster homes.
One other thing.
Correct.
One of the co-sponsors of the men, of this resolution has uh has suggested a change of the term monster house to multi-complex housing.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Who is this?
Chris Boylan. Is there a motion on the floor? Because we've been busy talking about amending something that I don't think exists. And I think we can, as Ross Perot would say, kill the snake in a minute. If we just make the motion first and we can incorporate what we're trying to accomplish with these amendments at the same time, do it one shot.
You know what? I, I think you're right. We have to put the cart before the horse.
Make the motion.
I, I move that we adopt the resolution. Do we have a second on it?
I second.
Okay.
Seconded, we can, and then it's moving into discussion and regarding discussion.
Can I move an amendment now?
Yeah, I'd like the amendment to be, instead of saying monster homes have us, which are an example of high-density housing, blah, 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 blah. Because uh in every paragraph where you only say monster homes, it clinches us into a definition, which we've already addressed on the island. And yes, we have a somewhat of a, a resolution about that in the council. But this is another swing at the plate by legislation, which is different than monster homes. This is dividing a lot into, it says, in the legislation, it says four divisions. The law, folks, if you want to really look at it, will create eight divisions. There are, there are four possible subdivisions of the four subdivisions. And if you guys don't know the law, I suggest you go back to the zoning and read it four times until you get a clarity about that. What we're talking about is eight subdivisions of a lot.
Oh.
And I think that's what we're opposing. So I'm thinking representing high density as an example of.
Robert, hold on.
Amendment is.
We need the language in the motion every place where monster house is listed. So what should it be?
As an example of high density.
Uh, Moil- uh, Member Moilin, is this a, do you have a point of order question, I believe?
This one's not a point of order. It's just to finish my thought. You can chop out every single thing that says monster home and say, we oppose the increase in density in mature, established neighborhoods with fixed infrastructure as per bill this and bill that. If, if, when we start talking monster homes, we lose some credibility because we sound like a bunch of NIMBYs. But our point is a legitimate point that we're taking neighborhoods that are already set, that can't accommodate more traffic, that can't accommodate more water flooding and stuff, and saying we're not going to stuff more density in there to solve the well-known existing uh, oh, housing problem. So let's just say, we oppose increasing densities in mature neighborhoods as per bills X, Y, and Z. And then you could just, so in other words, you can basically take the second half of, of the text we have here, take the monster home stuff out and just use your, you know, Mr. Fox's comment that it's about density. And it's about retroactively increasing density when you can't increase the road capacity or the water handling capacity or anything like that. That's the concept I think we're trying to oppose, if I understand my colleagues correctly. Let's just say that in this motion. It'll be half the text and it'll be more to the point.
Can you dictate the language of that to Robert Zane? Are you typing?
I was very confused. I would like to dictate this properly. So if you can say word for word exactly where did it.
Mr. Boylan, Boylan. From what you just said, can you give the, Robert, the language so he can fix this resolution now?
Sure, I'll do my best. Although if I had seen this before the meeting, it would have been easier. Um.
Eight times, right.
Whereas, uh, Manoa Neighborhood Board Number Seven opposes the concept of increasing density in mature, established neighborhoods where the infrastructure to support that density cannot be changed. The, the board opposes. The, the board opposes Senate Bill thirty two oh two and HB one six three zero.
I do apologize again. Um, I have gotten to the point where the concept of increasing density in mature established neighborhoods.
Where the infrastructure cannot be adapted to accommodate increased population.
Can we, can we not say just adapted? Can we say quickly adapted? It's not that you could not adapt the sewer system. It's just that unfortunately with the Lahaina fires, with everything else that's on our plate. We don't have the money. It'll be a good seventy five minutes.
Sure, that's fine.
I would say reasonably adapted. May I, may I interject because sometimes you may be able to do it with more time, but it's still not. Um, you know, advisable for.
Sure, sounds good.
Thanks Whitney.
Does that language work for you? Does that, did, did that language work for you? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, do you have access to a screen so you can see the edits I've made? Uh, that sounds right to you?
Here, I also had thrown in the chat before, um, Mr. Moylan spoke. My own attempt at just a quick change to, to getting monster homes out with inappropriate development and then leaving, just because it'll take a while for us to, unless we delete most of this, um, resolution. And simply, you know, substitute one or two short paragraphs, we could substitute inappropriate development. For where monster homes mostly are. And then I, with the, I had done an, an, a change to the initial paragraph. Which I threw in the chat.
I have a problem with inappropriate development because what we're dealing with is legislature. You have to be very specific. And so inappropriate could be in anybody's definition of that. Whereas high density defines what the objection is. And I think that we need to keep very specific as to what the neighborhood board is opposing. Not inappropriate.
I mean, I think that it's, I think it's what is being specifically suggested here, which I referred to. You know, with the subdivision of the lots and the increase in the minimum or maximum, um, you know, dwellings on lots.
Yeah, because it negates what we negotiated for far for monster homes, by the way. So if, if this passes, then all the negotiation, all the legislation for the, uh, bar that we passed for monster homes is thrown out. We negate, uh, four different ordinances if we, they allowed this to go forward.
The other thing, so I do hear what Robert's saying. I do hear what Whitney's saying. And I have to agree with Robert that the language has to be more specific than inappropriate. Um, so, uh, high density seems to be the main concern over here. So I just want to make sure that we, that as a separate amendment. So that way we have, so we, the word monster houses throughout the amendment is replaced with the phrase high density housing. Do I understand that correctly?
Or increase in density because, you know. Increase densification. It's not necessarily always going to be high density so much as, um, some of it might be medium density. Relative to what was previously low density, but.
The key is that it's retroactive density increase, which is the problem. The neighborhood's not built for that density. And so you're going into a neighborhood built for a certain density and saying, guess what? We're now going to increase it. That's what we're opposing.
That's why the mature neighborhood aspect of this is so important because it's saying, okay, you can do this in a new development. But maybe in a mature neighborhood that already has its sewer lines down, we can't do this.
Are we going to take out the words monster homes out of this? Cause it's not a monster.
I don't think we need monster homes. It's a nice example of how we fought them before, but it's not the point of this legislation.
Agree.
So again, for clarification purposes regarding this amendment, we are changing the term monster houses to the term high density housing.
Correct.
Replacing it. Okay, so the two amendments right now to this, to this resolution. Or the whereas language in the first paragraph and replacing the term monster housing. Uh, with high density housing.
Yes.
The first paragraph, whereas high density housing are defined as apartment buildings disguised as homes. I don't know that that, um, or sorry, the.
That's not relevant.
Second paragraph that no longer applies since we have a new definition. So I would move that we strike that paragraph entirely.
Strike that paragraph.
I agree.
So we can, for clarity's purposes, um, we're going to incorporate the amendment to change the term monster houses to high density housing along with the, with the deletion of the second whereas paragraph. Those two will be in the same amendment.
Do we need to be discussing this or can you just ask if anyone disagrees and then we can proceed at each moment?
We're going to vote on the amendment.
Let's, so.
As long as no one, at, at any point, somebody should voice a disagreement, I suppose, right?
I lose track of which amendments are what at this point, I think is the other thing as well. I can see that, I can see that happening as well very easily with this. Um, in which case just so I can, for clarity's purposes as well for the time being. Can I get a motion on the fourth amendment to change that, uh, change the language? To, um, whereas Manoa Neighborhood Board seven opposes the concept of increasing density in mature established neighborhoods where the infrastructure cannot be reasonably adapted to increase population. The board opposes Senate Bills three two zero two and House Bills one six three zero.
Great.
So motion.
All right.
Do I have a second?
I can, there's another monster house in here. Guys, oh, oh, that's, you didn't strike it, but that's all right.
So I'll strike it out when I can, when I can find what you're referring to. Uh, first off, the amendment, this amendment to change that, do I hear any opposition?
Oh wait, um, Chair Zane, uh, who moved? I know that one second this amendment, but who moved originally?
Member Fox made the motion.
I did.
Member Fox made the motion, Ellen seconded it. Any opposition to the amendment on that paragraph or the last whereas?
Oh wait. Is everyone's cameras on? Does any account?
Check something. I need to zoom out. There we go. So I'm not hearing any opposition. We, is this by unanimous consent or do we need a roll call vote for this answer?
Oh, uh, we could do a roll call vote. It's better. So everyone's camera has, everyone's camera has to be on. That's.
If there's no, if there's no one opposing, you don't need it.
That's what I thought. I just, I just wanted to clarify that. So it's, so that's why I'm rather than having to wait for you with cameras to go on, I would move on with the, with the second amendment at this point.
Its camera should be on all the time anyway.
Going to say that the motion is approved at this point.
So now we can go on to the emotion to amend the title.
Replace the term to, we can move on to the second amendment. Which was to replace the term monster houses with high density housing. And removing the second paragraph of whereas monster houses are defined as apartment buildings disguised as homes in our residential neighborhoods.
Any objections?
Are the, I do not hear any objections. The amendment is approved. And Ellen, thank you for raising that point. There was a third amendment. Oh wait, who was, who motion, who motioned seconded on that last amendment?
Who moved in second for that one?
The amendment that for high density housing.
Yes, so I did change the, okay.
Robert Fox motion and Ellen seconded it. Alright, minutes, minutes are important to be on these things. Only amendment, replace, changing the title from deleting the term over density in Manoa neighborhoods. Replacing it with Senate Bill three two zero two and House Bills one six three zero in the title of the resolution. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ellen Watson, seconded by Robert Fox. Or is there anybody who was opposed? Hearing none. Are there any more amendments that people would like to make to this resolution, to this resolution? And in the meantime, I would try to find that other term of monster house somewhere within this thing.
Air.
What's this? Sorry.
Uh, member Bosel.
Remember Bosel, go ahead.
Um, I would like to move to add, uh, in paragraph two, three, uh, four. Whereas high density housing often feature, well, features, I believe, um, concrete paint to paint would heat up our neighborhoods, increases flooding. I move that we add starves our aquifers and destroys our natural beauty.
Fine, you can add that in.
And I do think feature, now that we changed it to, from monster houses to high density houses, housing. I think that should say features instead of feature.
Yes.
That's very minor, but it's just a, yeah.
Good for you.
I'm over there. Oh, you know, that's, uh, over here increases flooding and destroys our natural beauty. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, uh, I guess I move to that. Does somebody second it or whatever?
I already did second.
I've also made the motion, Ellen Watson seconded. Do we have any opposition? Hearing, seeing none, amendment is approved, language is included. Any other comments?
Now we can vote on the vote, on the resolution and be done with this?
I mean, is it again, last call for amendments. If anybody else wants to make changes on this, please say now or forever hold your peace. Very well, motion to, oh, member Bosel.
Come on, Whitney, come on.
I, I, lots of windows open here and there. I'm trying to move things around so everybody can make, I can make sure everybody can see this sole amendment, uh, resolution in its entirety. Then you're muted.
Sorry, Chair, thank you. It's just an editing thing from, you know, since we changed monster houses to high density housing, it should read exacerbates, not exacerbate. Increases not increase.
The, before, this is a side note, you don't have to, I know I'm a grammar Nazi myself as well. I have to be in my profession. Minor changes like that, we'll, I, we will go over and make changes so that it is grammatically correct. But we don't need to make all the grammatical changes at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so.
I move that we adopt the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to, uh, to adopt the amended resolution seconded by member Bosel. Is there anybody in opposition of the amended resolution as it is? Hearing, seeing none, it has been approved by unanimous consent. This bill, this resolution, sorry, this resolution will be amended for minor grammatical changes. Thank you very much. And it will be later signed and posted on to the neighborhood forward for the meeting.
So you gotta take your hand sign down.
See, stop sharing. I can see everybody's lovely faces again. And we can now move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, so do we have, um, the, uh, Kamehameha Schools, why, why, uh, Newey Newey Capa, uh, Kea renovation?
Chair, this is Jeremy Shorenstein, Kamehameha Schools.
Hello?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is Jeremy. Great. Chair, this is Jeremy Shorenstein, Kamehameha Schools. Um, you mind if I share my screen?
Please, go ahead.
Great. Can everyone see the presentation? Ev- everyone can see the presentation?
Your, your screen is being shared. Go ahead.
Fantastic. Okay. So thanks everyone for your time. Um, mahalo for allowing us to be here. My name is Jeremy Shorenstein. I'm a planning and development manager with Kamehameha Schools. Um, with me here is Richard Chang. He's the asset manager for the Mo'eele'ee area. Where this Waianae Nui Nui Akapaka project is located. Um, the project is located at the corner of University and Beritania. And we'll get into that more. Victor Tran, uh, planning development manager is also here and May Ishimura. She's a senior communication specialist. So let's get into the presentation. So we like to start our presentations with introducing the founder of Kamehameha Schools, Princess Pawahi Paki. Uh, she was the last living descendant of King Kamehameha the first. And she inherited all the lands associated with his lineage, about three hundred and seventy five thousand acres. Uh, throughout her lifetime, she did see a lot of tragedies. She, she saw the decline of the Hawaiian culture, uh, of the Hawaiian language. And most sadly, the decline of the Hawaiian population, about sixty five percent of the Hawaiian population uh, declined during her lifetime. So imagine of the one point four million people living in Hawaii today, nine hundred thousand of those people passed away. So an incredible loss for the Hawaiian community. Um, and so with that, um, Princess Pawahi thought of, uh, what's the best way to create a thriving Lahui? Uh, and rebuild that culture and community with the Hawaiians that are left and uh, education was the answer. And so Kamehameha Schools was formed based on that thought. Um, and all those lands that I mentioned previously, uh, were then, uh, gifted into Kamehameha Schools. Uh, and the sole purpose of that was that the revenues of those lands would be used to fund the education of Hawaiian children. Uh, and that's still their mission today. So those Hawaiian children that were mentioned, there's now seventy seven thousand plus, um, children that are being served today through Kamehameha Schools. Seven thousand plus are through the three K through twelve campuses on Big Island Maui and Oahu and the thirty preschool locations that we have. Uh, the remaining seventy plus thousand are served through community investing grants. Those are things like scholarships, et cetera. Um, and in the top right corner, um, you can see the allocation of Kamehameha Schools real estate. And this is surprising to a lot of folks. So ninety six percent of the lands that Kamehameha Schools owns are agriculture or conservation. And so only four percent of those lands are commercial. And this, uh, Waianae Nui Nui Akapaka project falls within that small sliver of four percent. Um, and, and that small sliver is primarily, uh, to create revenues in order to fund the mission to educate Hawaiian children. So this area, Kapaka, I mentioned the project's name is Waianae Nui Nui at Kapaka. So, uh, Kapaka is the greater area. Uh, these are the lands that Kamehameha Schools owns highlighted in yellow on the right-hand side. Uh, it's little less than seven acres. Um, Kapaka literally translates to coral or limestone surface. So there is a car system. Our cavern system that flows underneath this area that allows water to flow from Mandala down to the ocean. And the images on the left-hand side are of Mo'eele'ee Summer Fest. It's an event that happens annually. It's going to be the weekend of July fifth and you can see the parking lot in the bottom right-hand corner of the image next to the varsity building. Uh, so the, uh, event is located. So, uh, so just everyone comes out if you're interested. Okay, moving on. The location of the project is within this orange highlight on the left-hand side. The project consists of four existing buildings on the Makai side of Coin Street. Uh, those buildings will remain the same as far as square footage. Uh, the interior will be re-demised to allow for more tenants, uh, to, uh, be within the project. And then the exterior will be beautified and we'll show some renderings of that shortly. And then the exterior will be beautified, and we'll show some renderings of that shortly. Uh, on the Maoka side of Coin Street, you you'll see uh improved landscaping, improved covered seating area, and a place for food trucks to park and for patrons to enjoy. The right-hand side of the screen is the barricade plan. The colors are different types of barricades, but we're including this because we had a kumu or a teacher come down from Kamehameha Schools and walk the site with us. And she's gonna have her class uh design the barricade, which is very exciting. Uh, it's gonna give these students an opportunity to see what it's like to work within the creative arts industry. Uh, while only still being high school students. So we're excited for that, and we hope that you as community members enjoy the art that they come up with. Um, let's start with the bottom of this uh screen. So you can see, these are all inspirational photos of what we're trying to achieve in this renovation project. So we want to create a place for the community, enjoy spending time that attracts folks to have that critical mass, where people think this is a cool neat area. Uh, with local shops and eclectic retailers, uh, folks like that within this uh curated development. And so one way to do that in in the top right uh portion of the screen, you can see the blue highlighted area. That's currently an asphalt drive aisle. Not the most exciting, not the most attractive. Uh, we're gonna convert that from asphalt to concrete and try to mirror all these images that you see at the bottom of the screen. The second thing to note is this yellow rectangle you see on the right-hand side, that's currently a a tenant space that's gonna be blown out, we'll call it, and create a breezeway. So folks can walk from Beritania to that heart of the retail portion of this project. On the Maoka side of Coin Street, uh, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of the site plan on the right-hand side of the screen. That's the improved landscaping, so more trees, a shaded seating area that'll um have additional seating as well. And then we'll have the three food trucks over there. Uh, more photos of Moiliili Summer Fest on the bottom of the screen. Now move into the renderings. Um, so the top of the screen is the existing as it is today. Uh, the bottom of the screen is the rendering and what we've designed for the project and hope to achieve. And then the top right-hand side, you can see, you know, the perspective of where these images are coming from. So you can see at the the bottom image where again, those cafe lights, the full height mural on the backside of the image. Uh, the trellis that's providing shaded seating, uh, improved facade for these buildings, really trying to make it a more attractive experience for folks. Uh, the northeast corner of the project, again, improved facade, full height mural here. Uh, this is a a holding image. Uh, well, that's being curated right now. Uh, with some art that's gonna be complimentary and incorporate the um history of the area. East image, um, again, trying to improve the landscaping and facade, draw folks in, make it more comfortable experience. Southeast corner. And in the middle left of the screen, you'll see that breezeway that I mentioned. So you'll walk in from Beritania Street through that breezeway, and you'll end up at this local heart of the the retail. Uh, with more seating, cafe lights, full height mural, et cetera. As far as timeline, um, we've been in constant contact with uh our tenant Ohana in this area. It's been planned for redevelopment for quite some time now. Um, and most recently, January twenty-fifth, we had a tenant Ohana coffee talk, and everyone was made aware that May, end of May, twenty twenty-four is the targeted move-out date. Um, and then construction will start shortly thereafter in July, twelve-month duration. Uh, and then after construction, tenants will move in, finish building out the interior of their spaces, and uh, targeted grand opening of spring twenty twenty-six. Uh, if you're curious of who we've uh met with or spoken to, you can see on the right-hand side, we're speaking to you folks now. Moiliili McCully Neighborhood Board tomorrow, um, our tenant Ohana mentioned, Moiliili Hongwanji. Uh, Church of the Crossroads is our neighbor just on the Maoka side, and this monthly meetings with Moiliili Summer Fest that uh Commando Schools attend. Um, if you have any questions outside of this meeting, please send an email to info@shopfindner.com. I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, Richard Chang, who I mentioned earlier, is the asset manager, and he'll be the primary contact as neighborhood liaison for this project. So I'll I'll pause here. If there's any questions, happy to take them.
Um, I have a couple of questions, actually. Uh, first off.
Okay.
Um, if we can go back to the rendering of the um unit that was supposed to be, that opens up onto, I believe, uh, King Street. Uh, the two-story uh, com- uh, two-story um, project, that one.
Hmm.
Uh, with the wall on the right-hand side uh of the picture and to the right-hand side of the of the structure itself from our current viewpoint. Uh, will there be plans to allow for a drive-through or access from or easier access uh between? The street on the opposite end as well as um, the uh, King Street? So, um. It doesn't seem that way.
The street on opposite end is.
I forget the name of that of that street, uh, right about right above it, but uh, one of the issues with that. Me walking around that area in the past has been the um, lack of parking and the inability to uh easily um. Navigate between parking at one location and getting to this particular project. Um, something to keep in mind with your renderings and your plans. The other thing also is that your renderings have also reduced uh parking in that area. And um, parking has always been a concern for a lot of the businesses around that area. Um, and. Especially because a lot of the parking that's currently there now is being used and operated by large commercial vehicles. Um, I guess, I'm not sure if you're able to speak about this right now, but do you have any idea if there'll be more parking available to the public to access these areas and to be able to park and enjoy some of the? Nearby places like the Japanese Cultural Center as well as um, the events like the Moiliili Summer Festival without having concerns about those? Uh, over half the stalls being taken by those large commercial um, um, operators?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Dan. Um, happy to answer that question. So maybe this image on the left-hand side will help. So. Uh, this parking lot area will be refinished, um, and it'll be restripped, so it'll feel more attractive. And then all of these buses, I think, are what you're mentioning. These are going to be relocated to an alternate location to be determined, and this will become public parking. So if you'd like to shop. Um, or enjoy um, the scenery within the Waianui Nui project, you can park here. Um, and then walk across the street and enjoy the the tenants that are gonna be there.
Thank you for that. It does. Thank you for addressing that. Um, do you have any plans to renovate the varsity building as well? Or is just mainly um, the commercial areas outside of the varsity voting?
Uh, I believe there's some work. Uh, let me pass it over to Richard Chang. He's the asset manager for the area, if he's able to speak on that.
So the varsity building is not part of the Waianui Nui project that we just presented tonight. However, with that being said, um, we, this is a longer-term hold for us. So we plan to keep the building in operations um for the foreseeable future. Um, currently, right now, as we stand, we're in um, design process for um, doing a lot of um, capital improvements um to the building, not only this year, but for the next. Couple years, again, to keep it in um, operations. Uh, at one time, a couple years ago, we were thinking about redeveloping it. So there was a lot of. Unfortunate deferred maintenance that was put onto the building, but now we're basically in catch-up mode up to get this building to a nicer standard.
Okay, and uh, I also had a question about the tenants themselves. Um, did, are you gonna, were offers made to? Uh, allow the tenants who are currently there now to occupy us, uh, this, reoccupy the space again? Um, some of those tenants I know have strong tie, stronger ties to to this community as well. So that's why I wanted to double check to see if uh, a lot of those businesses are gonna be returning, or if they're gonna be moving to somewhere else.
Yeah, you know, our tenants are so important to us, and so our, you know, our primary concern is, you know, how can we take care of our tenants? So, you know, we. It's basically a common, it's a three-tiered process that we have. First, what we do is we we've talked to all the tenants to see if we can relocate them to another um Commando Schools property. Um, in the Moiliili area. Um, you know, occupancy is always a a issue in terms of, you know, finding space. If we, if we're not able to do that, then we'll look at seeing if we can relocate them to another Commando Schools property in a different market area. Um, if it's like in Kapalama, uh, Kakako, if that works for the tenant. And then the the last process, if all that doesn't work, then um, with our relationships with other landlords and brokers. Um, you know, we have no problems reaching out to our friends in the industry to see if we can find um homes on other other properties. But again, a- as much as we want, we want to keep them within our Commando Schools' um portfolio. And so, yeah, currently as it stands, I mean, we do have some tenants that are in the process of relocating over the plaques. Um, we have one tenant we're working with that we're trying to get them to um, Kahaka. Um, so it's a process, and at the same token, to answer your your um, initial question, is also try to bring them back into the project uh once it's completed. So those those discussions are also um going on as.
Thank you very much. Uh, member Bosel had her hand raised next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm wondering if you can send this presentation PDF to the board members so that we can look at this a little further. For one, um, if you can put the email contact name and uh email address in the chat, if that's for everyone, not on, I I saw it on the PDF. I mean, in the chat so that we can copy and paste it instead of having to handwrite that down. Um, and then whoever the name of the person is that we're actually going to be hearing from at that info. Um, and then can you go back to, so are there, I missed the beginning of this, but are you proposing any new structures or is this just renovations to existing structures? Apart from that one.
Renovations. Yep, renovations to existing structures. So the square footage of these buildings will remain the same.
Okay, okay. So those ones, um. A suggestion I would have is to make the windows, I see a whole bunch of new plate windows. This is in Manoa. We wanna, you know, take advantage of our rather. Moderate weather here. I would say if you're going to be adding new windows, try and make them operable. You know, a lot of cafe, it's it's unfortunate. You have all these like lovely uh photos that show. Um, you know, a lot of pedestrian activity, and those buildings unfortunately have no setback. There's sidewalk, street. Building and a wall, you know, so if you can't um set that back because that's too big of a renovation, I would say make the windows more operable so that you can have in and out, you can have airflow. Potentially reduce the amount of AC and, you know, increase, get, start to get at that whole pedestrian experience that you're obviously going for here, but aren't gonna get with big plate windows. That's one thing. Um, and then I'd say anywhere that you can look at, um, you know, increasing permeability of the ground, if there's any loading areas that seem less. You know, there's just a lot of improvements in permeable paving systems, so consider that if that's at all possible, rather than just painting over asphalt. Those are my.
Yeah, thank you, Member Bosel.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take note of that. Thank you.
Robert?
Robert? I have to unmute, sorry. I always, I don't wanna intrude on anyone.
No, 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 we appreciate that.
Look, um. I I'm excited that you're actually doing something with that lousy corner. Lazing stakes. I have the first house of Manoa on University. I'm the only residential property on University before you reach Miley Way. So I, this is my, this is my hood. Um, question here. Are you constrained to just do commercial development? Uh, we just had a really fantastic uh student housing complex built at the YWCA. On University Avenue. Are we, is it possible to even think outside the box and make student housing? Cause we have no student housing in university around here. I know it's not Commando Schools, but you know, God, these kids have to have someplace to live, and if you could. I don't know, it's not my place to tell you how to do a development, but man, if you could go up a number of stories, it would not impact anybody's view. That area is. Not impactful. It's rare that you see a neighborhood o- associate that actually asks for development. But, you know, across the street, you have a rather high-rise housing project, and. Are you just nervous that somebody's gonna oppose you? Because I can't think of an opposition about making a larger development here that would actually. Benefit the student housing population of the University of Hawaii in Manoa. Um, if you decide not to do that, God bless. I think a couple of points were very well taken, and that is, right now, we have no permeable land. On that parcel, nothing. Um, I don't know how you address that. I don't even know it's appropriate. Um, flooding is an issue. Uh, I've seen it today, driving my moped in the middle of the rain, it floods on the corner. Um. I'm grateful that you're doing this work and that it's gonna be wonderful because clearly we could use. Better detail um establishments in that corner. It'll upgrade the entire neighborhood. So thank you very much for even considering to do this work. I appreciate that. I guess my only ask is. Would it be po- I mean, I know you already have architectural drawings done and all this kind of stuff, but man, I would totally support you in going higher. Within reason. And making mixed-use development where you have commercial on the bottom floor and and student housing above. Just my thought.
Mahalo, Member Fox. Um, student housing um was contemplated in the the greater development for this area. Like I said, the whole Kapakia area is just under seven acres. Um, and so that was contemplated. For this uh specific area, we wanted to make it a a a cool um, kind of local restaurants and shops, eclectic restaurants and shops. Uh, as the first phase of the redevelopment of the entire area. Uh, and the redevelopment of this area, I think, has been contemplated for. Over a decade now. Um, so I think the community is well aware of it, and Commando Schools is doing um what we can in order to move that forward. So I appreciate the recommendations and. Um, here in the neighborhood board, um, support redevelopment is fantastic. So appreciate that.
Uh, Jeremy, my my, hav- having been head of the zoning uh commission of Long Beach. Um. If in fact, you have plans in the future for developing something above it. Then it changes your architectural plan for the first floor, two floors. You have to re-support the two floors now before you make the development because. You could not possibly do the infrastructure uh construction to support any development above it. Now, if you decide that you want to in the future, like ten years from now, decide to make housing above it. It would be incumbent upon you to make the structural change on the structural support of the building itself. Uh, I am a contractor, so I know this shit. Um. I would suggest maybe you should go back to your architectural team and say, okay, what can we do to um? Prepare ourselves for future development if in fact you decide to do it. It's not really that cost differential on the first, second floor for development. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you, Member Fox. We'll definitely take note of that. We'll take a look. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, let's see, I don't see anybody else on the board. Uh, Laura?
Yes, um, thank you very much. Um, yes, I know you um presented something um previously to the Moiliili Neighborhood Board. It was about a corridor that went through to um, uh, Beritania. And I mentioned that there is no transit stop there, and it didn't seem to be a practical um use of your um land to o- open up that. Uh, the second is, I asked Elmer Kai, and I see he's on the um, uh, list of participants now. I asked him last time. Uh, is the, they, are the dormitories at a hundred percent full capacity at the university? And including that one that's now the YWCA, because um, overbuilding in our neighborhoods. Uh, will amount to flushing out the workforce housing um that we need to have to um, have a viable community. And I'm very concerned about that, and uh, that is a real concern. There are other people that are coming, I believe, to your neighborhood board or other boards. Fairly soon because they do not want the um, uh, absolutely um outruns outrageously high um building that's on the um Diamond Head side. Uh, that the Commando Schools owns uh and blocks the view of the people who already live there on on um Colo Lane. Could you respond to that, please?
Uh, I'm not familiar with the the Colo Lane project that you referenced. Um, it's in Moiliili?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
This is all Moiliili. Yeah.
Right, I'll have to look into that um, and see if that's a, a land that kind of the school does own, um, and if there was a development on it. But I'm not, I'm not familiar. I will look into it. I hear you absolutely on the, the workforce housing. Um, and the concern that the workforce housing might get pushed out with future redevelopment. So um, when looking at this area and what makes sense. Workforce housing could definitely be something that would be incorporated into a future redevelopment plan.
Well, it, it workforce housing is first and foremost, it's not student housing. Let's, let's address with uh, Elmer Kai's um, uh, acumen, he can address what is already on campus and available. And if it's not a hundred percent, uh, it should be a hundred percent before any thought is pushing into our community. Thank you.
All right, it, Kala Lane, is that next to the former Kokoa Market? You're talking about the student housing project?
Well, well, if you're thinking, if you're thinking about Nigia Market, uh, the Puck's Alley area, that's where Kala Lane is. And, and uh, Commando Schools has already put in uh, um, renderings of this very large, very tall building that's, that they're planning for that.
Okay.
And also, I, I do not, I do not understand with the property setbacks, the most Makai uh, um, turquoise line. Uh, shows no setbacks at all between that property and the property that's more to the Makai going towards um, Baritania. That's just, that is just clogging um, the whole of the neighborhood and what other people have said before about uh, permeable surfaces and so forth. Are just going to um, uh, further exacerbate the, the huge uh, surface flooding. If you notice what was the rain today, hey, it's everywhere.
Sorry, if I could jump in here real quickly regarding um, the renderings that you might have seen on Pucks. Uh, like Jeremy had mentioned, we've been looking at the possibility of redeveloping Pucks for well over a decade. Um, and yes, renderings have been developed uh, for that property. But as of right now, there are no plans to redevelop at Pucks at this time. Um, will there be that uh, potential in the future? I mean, you know, that's something that we're again looking into. But again, what, what you might have seen was something that was done years ago and right now is no longer.
Just recent, just recently, just recently at the um, Mo'eele'ieli Board.
I don't know where um, where those plans came from, but we haven't done anything um, recent on, on the Puck side. So it might have been some old stuff that was just.
It's new. We've been watching all of them over the decades. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to.
Thank you, Member Ruby.
Uh, sorry, we gotta move on to Member Chong.
Yes, um, I commend you for not raising the, the height of the buildings. I think that, that intersection where King and Baritania and university all meet. It is just too chaotic right now to add something like to add a few more floors just for housing. I commend you for not doing that just because of the traffic flow in that area is just so chaotic right now. And it really should stay in a two-story and no more. Because of all the activity in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Chong. Uh, Brett. Brett. Brett, Chris, you are still muted.
Hey, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, can hear you.
Okay. Um, hey, I just wanted to, a couple of observations on the um, the renderings for the uh, project. One is, I didn't, I think, I think it looks barren in terms of they're not, there's not as many trees as one might expect. A lot of, a lot of non-shaded areas there. That's one observation. The second one is the um, that area that's like a little park on Coin Street. Um, again, you know, barren, not that many trees. But I was wondering, would there be security for that area? Cause I can just imagine, I, I'm, I catch the bus every day to go to work and come back home. And I stand in front of the Gia Market waiting for the number six bus. So I see that area all the time, every day. And um, I can just imagine a homeless camp right in that park. And you know, absent any, any kind of security. So um, I don't know if you can address any of those. Um, thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, and thank you for the question. So I'll speak to the landscaping portion. We actually did uh, increase the number of trees uh, within this project. Um, and so there will be more landscaping, more shaded, uh, more exposed soil, call it, so more permeable surfaces. Um, and apologies if the renderings aren't showing that clearly enough. Um, I'll pass it over to Richard Chang to speak on security.
As you know, security has been kind of the evolving thing. I mean, even currently with our, our properties right now. I mean, we've had to increase security um, due to homeless issues and some crime. And I mean, we're not immune, as you guys know, to um, to this as other, other places are. Um, as in terms for the new project, I mean, we are working on um, again, a, a evolved security plan when the time comes. On that will probably involve both um, a- actual security guards on the property along with the technology. Uh, meaning probably like a camera system that can be integrated within there. So um, we haven't come up with it yet, but we are very um, sensitive to these issues um, and will, you know, plan accordingly as we get there.
Yeah, I appreciate it. If anything, it's gotten uh, worse. I mean, just today I was at the Gia Market. There's, you know, homeless lady that collapses in front of the, you know, uh. Uh, the, the, the tea shop there, you know, and, and the emergency responders came. But that's becoming more common now in that corner area.
I think I appreciate your concern, your comments.
All right, thank you. And we've, um, due to time constraints, it's already nine seventeen. I'm gonna have to close discussion on this subject. Thank you very much for your presentation and for bringing this, um, for talking to us regarding this upcoming project. So we really appreciate your time on this.
Yeah, mahalo for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on. Center for the resilient neighborhoods at Capilani Community College requested to um, at the last minute, asked to be moved to the April meeting. So they will be on next month's agenda. The same goes with Saint Francis as well. I kept them on the agenda because I was hoping that somebody either for, against the project would be able to speak on this. But um, again, they asked to, the person who was gonna present on the project, the developer asked to, they'd still need more time to prepare their presentation apparently. I'm going also take the agenda out of order at this time, bring up community concerns. And um, because Ekena Kaya did request to have a presentation, again, it's my bad for not um, including that on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'm gonna ask that they be able to present on um, their issue. Laura, sorry, well quickly.
Yes, very quickly. I was going to present tonight, but um, I have a resolution that has to do with a full EIS of the uh, site. And I'm not saying the bridge, but the site of the Alawai Canal and the two neighbor residential neighborhoods on either side of the canal. And why a full EIS is necessary. Now, how it impacts Manoa is that there will be fifteen hundred to four thousand strangers coming through our neighborhoods up into Manoa. And that is something that is very impactful for the rest of you. Thank you. It'll be on the next agenda. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll keep an eye out for that. And then, so at this time, I'd like to request Ekena Kaya to, uh, if they're here, please. Oh, and one more thing before then, um, Benson, I'd like to clarify something regarding um, uh, Ekena Kaya. They were, they, we just want to confirm, but for the minutes for the meeting, since uh, a lot of the minutes are on YouTube now. Um, if there also be noted that Ekena Kaya presented during the community concerns portion.
Oh yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Ekena Kaya, please, and I do, I do apologize again for not including you on the agenda properly. I'm glad you're able to still make your presentation tonight with us.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, can we share our screen, please?
Please, go right ahead.
You guys can all see that?
Yes, we can.
Why don't you just present or just respond? Aloha Chair, aloha everyone. My name is Chris Flaherty and I am a, uh, one of the principals at Ekena Kaya Development. I'm here to share with you uh, our project uh, in Wilder and Dole. Um, I'll start off by also introducing my partner, Patty Barbie, as well as my son Keegan Flaherty. And I know a Watson and Alicia Rulekey. Um, Alicia is Patty's daughter. Keegan's obviously my son and I know a Watson is our former uh, business partner's son, Colly Watson. Who uh, we began the development company about 12 years ago. So with that, I'm gonna have Patty kind of tell you about the name of our company and how we uh, and then I'll move into talking about what we've developed today. And our plans for Dole and Wilder.
Hi everyone, my name is Patty Tankayo. I'm uh, I'm a native Hawaiian and I was um, actually born and raised on the island of Molokai. So um, it's important to um, our company and myself that our, our company is guided by Hawaiian values. Of aloha aina and sustainability. And I, I. I um, it's important to, to me that in the environmental assessment process, we take it to a, a higher standard. And we're not like any other um, affordable housing developer, development company because we're here to stay. We wanna be a part of the community. We wanna listen. We want feedback. You know, we want our projects to, to be a part of every community that we, we join to. So, so we have a, we, we have a lot more to, to cover, so I'll pass it back to you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you Patty. And just our experience uh, in the residential development, where we've done almost three thousand units today uh, in California and Hawaii. A majority of that uh, portfolio is affordable housing for rent. Our very first project uh, here, I'd say the last three projects we've completed here. Uh, Nonakuli Village Center, Altononakuli was a commercial center, um, which was finished in two thousand nineteen. Uh, Malka of that uh, village center is uh, Holly Makana'ononakuli, which is forty-eight residential units. Affordable housing, sixty percent AMI and below. And then we went on to develop the, the shopping center, which included uh, Commando Schools Agnes Cope uh, Learning Center. Which was Makai of Holly Makana'ononakuli. And then we brought in uh, uh, one I Coast Comprehensive Health Center for a satellite clinic. We have liberty dialysis, uh, uh, renal dialysis clinic. We have a Starbucks. We have a Long's Drugs, uh, Wendy's. And we have some local uh, shops that were actually started by uh, a couple of Nonakuli grads that we're super proud of. Um, helping them uh, get started in business. They're about to open up another uh, store next door, so we're excited. So that was a very uh, a long process, twelve years and four governors. Uh, but that signalized intersection on Farrington Highway was quite complicated and uh, but we got her done. And then we uh, moved on and completed in two thousand nineteen as well, our Holly Makana'omiley. Uh, it was a fifty-two unit affordable, multi-family apartment project, all rental. These were all rental. Which was uh, I think very well done, same architectural firm for all three projects. Architects Hawaii, who did the shopping center, um, and then did Miley. And then they also just completed with us our Holly Makana'omo'eele'ieli uh, project, um, which was a hundred and five capuna projects. You can see it in the middle of the screen. And uh, we just finished that. We're fully occupied. We uh, uh, demolished, uh, I believe it was thirty-two, uh. I'm sorry, twenty-seven units that were built in the late thirties, forties, were really, really in bad shape. And we were able to relocate uh, quite a few of the ten, of the tenants there and move them into the, to our capuna project. So very pleased about uh, that project. Same general contractor, same architects uh, on both of the uh, you know, affordable rental housing projects. Next slide. Uh, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to uh, my son Keegan to talk about the property. Um, so Keegan.
Yeah. Aloha, good evening. My name is Keegan Flaherty. I'm a senior development associate with Ekena Kaya. I'm gonna be sharing uh, details on the new community, Kukalaha'le Place, which will be situated between Wilder and Dole Street. Uh, so we're pleased to present a brand-new affordable and family-oriented residential community. Nearby highly sought-after schools, employment, shopping and medical care. Uh, the site size is a little over one acre and is on five parcel zone for apartments and residential. There are currently six residential buildings on the site uh, that contain twenty-seven units of market-rate rental housing. Uh, so you can see the site's within close proximity to Puma, Punahou, Mary Knoll School, University of Hawaii, Capilani Medical Center, Schroners Hospital. And several job centers. Uh, the plans call for a fifteen-story building at a hundred and thirty-eight feet, containing a hundred and seventy-six units total, consisting of studios, one and two-bedroom units. In our projects, we incorporate sustainability measures such as achievement of LEED gold. We're also committed to an a hundred percent uh, electric building. We're gonna be providing electric vehicle charging stations, uh, Energy Star appliances and solar. Among other things, we bring on professional consultants who help us achieve these goals as we work through the design and permitting process. So this is the ground floor level showing ingress and egress on both streets. We'll have a hundred and eighty-seven total parking stalls uh, within a four-story parking structure. Which constitutes a parking ratio of little over one to one. Uh, we'll be providing fifty-nine bike parking stalls, two loading stalls and electric vehicle parking. Uh, this level will also have a landscaped outdoor plaza, residential lobby and two elevators. Uh, the second floor shown here has additional parking, an exercise room and a community resource center with a kitchen. Uh, here the third and fourth floor showing more parking. Uh, above the parking levels, we'll have eleven floors of residential units. Uh, this is a typical floor plate for the residential units above. Here what the unit layouts look like. Uh, there'll be twenty-two studios, sixty-six one-bedrooms and eighty-eight two-bedrooms. Uh, the units will come with in-unit washroom, dryers. And as you can see, these unit sizes are fairly large and are suitable and attractive for many local people. Now I'm gonna pass it back to Chris to talk about some of the uh, more design elements.
So, thank you Keegan. As I mentioned earlier, we uh, engaged architects Hawaii, who had just completed our previous two residential projects. Well, we wanted to be particularly sensitive to the view shed corridor. We tried to keep it very narrow. The lot lent itself to keeping it narrow as well. Um, i- in this, you'll see the egress from Wilder and Dole. We felt that was important to have uh, egress on both ends, obviously. And as you can see, the uh, we've got the outdoor plaza area. The facade of the windows, as we progress with our uh, plans a little bit further, you'll see a very nice uh, probably a nicer uh, rendering of the building. But this gives you an idea that the parking will be screened. Um, next slide. You can see the very thin corridor of the building and the relationship to the buildings that are uh, very nearby. With that, I'm gonna hand it to uh, my Noah Watson to talk about the different uh, income level. Oh, I'm sorry, to Keegan uh, Flaherty to talk about the different income levels.
Yeah, so one of the key elements um, that we haven't talked about yet is who is uh, this community gonna be serving. Uh, what we're showing on this slide are the median incomes of different household sizes in the city and county of Hornu Loo. Uh, this where the term AMI comes from. AMI stands for the area median income. Uh, if you look at the white box within the dash lines, this the housing type that serves the population sixty percent AMI. If you look at the white box within the dashed lines, this is the housing type that serves the population 60% AMI and below, and is of the highest need, and it's the one that we focused on for all of our previous projects. However, it's limited because of the funding that's available. These are the people who need housing more than anyone, and we have and will continue to be focused on providing housing choices for those people. We've listed examples of incomes of different occupations that fit within these categories. Examples within this category could be retail workers, preschool teachers, or mechanics. The next level shown is the 80 and 100% AMI, which is that population that really doesn't qualify for that 60% and below population, but in turn can't afford the market rents currently available out there for rent. This population demographic has been termed workforce housing or the missing middle because it's a large segment of the population that's really historically been left out of the housing solution. These are people in need of affordable housing as well and are considered some of the most difficult to serve, in fact, because the funding available to make this housing hasn't really been feasible until 2022 when the state recognized this as a need being met and introduced a funding program called the Rental Housing Rolling Fund, a Tier Two program that I'll talk about in a little bit. These are your post-secondary teachers, civil engineers, and education administrators. In fact, actually, 60% of Native Hawaiian families fall below 90% AMI. So when we started this project, we looked at ways we could entitle it so that we could have the most options so that we could actually execute and build this project. And as I mentioned previously, our priority is to house individuals and families at or below 60% AMI. However, the only financing approach to be utilized to build this type of housing is very competitive and unfortunately oversubscribed. Again, the challenge in providing affordable housing is the availability of financing options. These options presented to you today are the results of us trying to find alternatives to address the wide needs of affordable housing, whether they're affordable rentals at 60% AMI and below, or affordable rentals between 80 and 100% AMI, or affordable for sale, which are all desperately needed. We need alternatives and we need flexibility to pursue those alternatives, which, which are limited. If we were to only focus on one avenue of housing type, the reality may be a community of housing that we invest a ton of time and money into that never gets built and we continue to fall short of addressing our housing problem. When we take on new projects as well, we look for sites with convenient access to job centers, places that are desirable and suitable for housing. But most importantly, we work with sellers that give us the time to secure the entitlements and the financing. And our sellers here have given us the much-needed time to do what we need to do to provide affordable housing. However, they're also expecting us to be creative and to execute on our promises to buy the site and actually develop housing. They're willing to give us this time because they believe in us, our track record, and they can appreciate our ability to give them timelines like this and options to pursue. We've committed to submitting applications to obtain the financing to build rental affordable apartments. As you can see, our main preference is to build housing using low-income housing tax credits for those 60% AMI and below, or Lytec. We're also considering the missing middle housing demographic serving households 80 to 100% AMI, which is our second priority, but is also tremendously needed. This would be done by applying for the funding from the state's Rental Housing Rolling Fund Tier Two program, which is, as you can imagine, highly competitive. Only to the extent that we can't do either of these, we've included a for-sale component to build affordable for-sale housing. This slide also shows you the unit and income distribution for Kukala Hale Place. All the rentals will be affordable and restricted by definition, and the rents will be shown to you on the next slide. Here are the projected rental rates for the two scenarios. Only people who meet the income qualifications for these income levels will be able to rent these units. We will be restricted to renting to people out or below these income levels for a period of 61 years. Anyone who makes more than 100% AMI will not qualify for this housing. As we move through the environmental review and the 201H approval process, we'll be required to consult with the various regulatory agencies. These agencies are gonna be reviewing our project and making sure that we're mitigating any impacts to the surrounding community during and/or following construction of the project. Here's our anticipated timeline. We expect to be done with our environmental review by next month. Following this, we hope to receive our 201H approval by this summer. We'll submit drawings and plans early next year to receive building permits a year later. Once we receive our building permits, we can start construction and anticipate an 18-month construction schedule, which would have us completing the project and leasing up in October of 2027. So that's it for our presentation, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question actually regarding the residents on the, on the land currently. There was discussion at the, at the previous presentation on Monday regarding what was gonna happen with some of those residents. Has there even been this discussion with them, especially some of the older unit holders at this time? I know there was like a mention about like a 90-something-year-old person who does not, who refuses to move off the site.
Yeah, I, I believe there might have been some misinformation out there with respect to that. We're not forcing anybody to move. We haven't asked anybody to move. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, including all of the entitlements that are required, as well as the financing mechanisms. So that, I think there was just a lot of confusion leading up to that meeting. You know, that was a, a meeting that we volunteered to have, you know, as part of the town hall process. And it was, it was information only, and apparently in that process, I think some information got mixed. I'm actually meeting with that family tomorrow to, you know, to discuss with them. But we're not forcing anybody to move. We're not doing any of that, so.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying on that. Member Tong.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is, where is the, I guess, the parking? Where are, where are they coming out from? Dole Street or are they coming out from Metcalf? Which side are they coming out of? And the other question is, why is there only one parking for one, on the one unit? Because you would think that they would, especially a two-bedroom, would need more than just one parking space.
Yeah, parking, parking's been a, a real concern of ours. And just kind of give you a little history. On our Mo'ee'ee'ili Kapuna project, when we went through the design of that project, we parked one unit to one-third of a car. So like, you know, three units, one car. And it really, at that time, was kind of in vogue and everyone was thinking, oh, we'll use more public transportation. Well, we found that the market, and especially Kapuna, really, really wanted their car. So we underestimated the, you know, how much demand there was for, for parking, even though the, you know, we were getting the message from the city and others, hey, you know, you don't need that much parking. Well, we're not gonna do that again. And so to your question of why we went one-to-one, you know, we, we, we do feel that less than one-to-one is not, is not gonna work for us from a lease-up standpoint, right? And from an occupancy standpoint, and so we felt that one-to-one was a, a safe alternative. And in terms of your egress, it's off both Dole and Wilder egress and ingress, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add too, we did park one-to-one, but, you know, when we chose this site, we obviously knew it was in a highly desirable location. So, you know, we can expect future residents to maybe be able to walk to work or, you know, commute by bicycle. We're gonna be providing 59 bike parking stalls to hopefully relax the reliance on automobiles as, you know, we've been pushing towards that as, you know, a community as a whole to reduce reliance on automobiles and, you know, increasing traffic. So, you know, we hope that's also, you know, part of the equation that's considered too. And, you know, that some people, you know, they may have an extra car, but you, we might be able to offer an extra space for someone that isn't using, you know, their parking stall. Maybe they don't have a car, so we can, we can offer an extra space that we have to a family that might have two cars.
Okay, but the other thing is, Dole Street, I, I go past Dole Street and I always see bumper-to-bumper cars trying to get onto the freeway, and your condo is right in that pathway. Do you realize that, that there's gonna be a lot of traffic on that street?
Yeah, our traffic study, you know, matched our anticipated egress times. And so I think a lot of the traffic will try to unload on the Wilder. At least that's our expectation. And we'll probably promote that. I think it'll be self-promoting because you are correct. Dole is, can get a little, very much congested. I go that way quite often to the office downtown. So it's, it can be difficult.
I'm going to move on now to Laura.
Yes, thank you. Two quick questions. First of all, are you the owner of all of the multiple parcels? And have you brought it together under a TMK? Second of all, are you planning any amenities that you didn't mention in here? Because other, other developers have, in other places in our larger community, have suggested that they have to have amenities. My feeling is, I live in a building with no amenities, and other people may also. This, to make things affordable, you do not need to have amenities. Are you gonna have amenities? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll answer your first question first with respect to ownership. We have an option to purchase the larger of the, of the property. So we're in contract and we've executed an option to purchase the property, the largest property. The other two smaller parcels, we've been working with the current owners to acquire. Originally, our intent was just to buy the larger property. So we entered into an option to purchase, and then the two neighboring property owners contacted us and asked us if we'd be interested in including their property as part of the project. And we've been negotiating with them. So yeah, so we do not own those properties. We have an option to purchase, which gives us site control to pursue the tax credit financing. But the other two properties, we're working with the sellers. There are the smaller two homes that are more Malka fronting Wilder. And then the second part of your question with respect to amenities, I'll let my son Keegan answer.
Yeah, so we're planning on having an exercise room, you know, a landscaped plaza area outside. You know, having parking one-to-one is actually considered an amenity. A community resource center with a kitchen as well for gathering space, you know, tenant association meetings, you know, the provision of social services, maybe, things of that nature.
Well, I would consider that you would lower the cost for rentals if you did not have amenities. There's parks and many other areas which people can enjoy around in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 9:44. We still have a few more things left on the agenda, so at this time, I am closing discussion on this, seeing as there's also no more hands. Oh, sorry. Brett, you're gonna be the last person to speak on this. Real quick. Brett? Brett, your hands raised. I see your hands raised, but you're still muted.
Sorry. Okay.
You're last to want. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, my question, just real quick. What happens after the 60th or 61st year? You know, once, once your required term of affordability is over. And then also, is the rent inclusive of any, I guess, fees that would be associated with parking and the amenities? Or is that just included in the rent that you showed us? Thank you.
Yeah, Brett, a great question. With respect to the parking and any ancillary fees, there are none. But the rent is inclusive of all of the fees. So I just want to make you aware of that. And then the other, oh, after the 61st year. I, I, you know what? That's a great question. We do that regulatory agreement because the investors that come in, we've tried to push through agreements in perpetuity. But a lot of the equity investors, that just creates a lot of angst for them. So the 61 years, we've never had, like, I've been, I've been in this business for, gosh, 25 years. So I've not quite gone the distance of 61 years. I probably won't get to see the 61st year on any of our properties that we have, I don't believe. But I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Technically, they could, they could resort back to market rents. But from what I understand from other developers and owners, and by the way, you know, we're active owners. We own these, these properties and, you know, we've made all the guarantees on them as well. So it's not public housing. It's not something owned by the state, the city. These are owned by individuals, by families, you know, so we're, but we take, we take ownership very seriously. And so a lot of times, after 30 years, we will, as owners, go back in and recapitalize the entire project and property with new financing. And that new financing typically will require us to place another deed restriction of affordability on top of the expiring one. So for example, at the end of 30 years, we need to bring in more capital to get some more, you know, capital improvements done. We'll extend the 61 years by another 61 years. That's typically what happens. But I, I can't predict what's gonna happen on this one specifically. But I wouldn't, I don't know if Keegan and I Noah and Alicia will still be around dealing with it, but they might, they might resyndicate it and recapitalize it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I'm, again, thank you for sticking around with us up to this late, and we do appreciate your time. So thank you again for presenting on this issue.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, on the community concerns, there was a resident contacted us regarding pickleball noise, or noise from the pickleball courts in Manoa Park. Is that resident still here to discuss further on this issue? I am not hearing any comments or hands raised on this subject. I'm going to move on. If anybody else has traffic, driving concerns, I know it's been a recurring issue for our board over here. Any updates or concerns people want to raise at this time, please do so. I also want to encourage anybody else who has any other issues they want to bring to the board's attention outside of the agenda. Kelly.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there any updates on the status of Kohora Ridge, the Kohora Ridge development?
The board member who usually reports on that, Ms. Kawano, is not here with us tonight. So I personally don't have any updates.
She is here. She joined the meeting.
Did Patty join? Oh, Patty, are you able to speak on this?
Yes, I was, sorry, I had to turn on function tonight. No, I don't have any updates, although I saw an email from our neighbor's assistant on a reply from HJFC. I don't have a chance to read it. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it, to see what HJFC said.
No, sorry.
It was a,
I had a chance to read it.
It was a rather rude, oh, you guys totally missed the point of, you know, the fact that this already went through. They only needed to do one community meeting and they had more than one and basically negated any of our concerns.
That's true. That's exactly what they did. So they just kind of blew off our resolution and we're surprised that we even had a resolution opposing it because it's a done deal and like Whitney said, they had two meetings and, and they don't need an EIS, so that's it.
Whitney, you have your hand raised?
For a separate issue, yes. I just wanted to let folks know that the Manoa Outdoor Circle is going to be having its 1,000 plant and tree giveaway on April 21st, Sunday, April 21st. So if folks want a free plant, they can come by the Atherton. So if folks want a free plant, they can come by the Atherton House, the UH president's house, from eight to noon on April twenty-first. I'll announce it again in the future, but just wanted to get it on folks' calendar.
Thank you very much. Curtis.
Yes, Chair Zane, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I emailed you and a few of the Manoa Neighborhood Board members about the McCully Street Bridge intersection issue. You know, going towards Manoa and trying to get on Dole Street, that intersection is dangerous for left turns. So I inquired with the State of Hawaii's Complaint Highway Oahu email and also the city regarding the four-way stop at Alexander Street and Dole Street. Was wondering maybe if they could work on traffic safety and also traffic congestion, alleviation in the area, especially with, you know, the project. Is it a proposed project? I don't know. The apartment complex that's going to go up. Anyway, I still have not heard back from the city or state. So hopefully regarding the four-way stop on Alexander and Dole Street, maybe, I don't know if a traffic light or a roundabout is better, but just for the city and state to really get those two intersections under control when it comes to traffic, that would be great.
Alexander and Dole Street, okay. Thanks for your comment about that, Curtis. And we'll see if we can pass that along to our, to the Bears representative as well as Councilmember Sei's office to see if they have any comments about that, hopefully by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Zane, this is Poa from Councilmember Sei's office. That was Curtis Hayashi that actually requested that. Is that you, Curtis?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Chair Zane, is it okay for me to reply?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Okay, so as of right now, the Laura Manoa traffic concerns, the four-way stop on Alexander Street and Dole at the McCully Street Bridge, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as of right now, there is, I did put in a request for an investigative services for the concern, and right now it's being referred to at HPD and also DTS, so Department of Transportation. If there's anything that's going to be changed, the DTS or Department of Transportation needs to do a traffic survey in order for it to be revised. There, I'm not sure if it needs to be repainted, re-stripped, or there needs to be signs that needs to be put up for people to see and to abide by the, abide by the situation, the four-way stop. But at this point, it's basically under investigation for the Department of Transportation. And also, the other thing too about, I believe it was Kai Manna who called about the pickleball. Is he here or no?
I don't see him, but if you could speak more about that issue, I'll be here to talk more about that, but please.
Just a quick update on that one. Right now, there was also a request for investigative report that was sent to the Department of Parks and Recreation. They will get back to me on that. As of right now, there's no signage that says that pickleball cannot be played in the area on the tennis courts. I know that some pickleball areas are designated only for pickleball, and I know it makes a little bit more louder noise than tennis being played. And because it's in the Valley of the Park, it's very, the noise carries. So right now, I am working with the Department of Parks and Recreation to see if that can be either revised where it can, it's either not going to be a place for pickleball or it's something that has to be approved by the Department of Parks and Recreation. So I just want to give you an update on that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it was somebody else who made that same issue regarding the pickleball noise. I found the email about that to me. But it's somebody else who raised that same concern. So if you could give us an update about the signage to clarify only tennis in these tennis courts at Manoa Valley District Park, we'd appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Poa had your answer for you. Clyde Lumen is here, Poa.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what's that? Remember?
Clyde Lumen is here.
Oh, yes. Oh, hi, Clyde. So I wanted the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to take up this much time. Clyde, I wanted, remember Lumen, I wanted to double-check. There was a request that you put in about an increase in rent credit or to more than sixty dollars a year. Is that what you were requesting for? That was a while ago. I talked to the Department of Finance Services and they wanted to get more information. So if you could, I'm going to put my email in the chat so you can email me any more details that you would like to give me or if I can, we can start a conversation offline to my office. But I'll put it in the chat so you can see what my email is and then just email me more information. We can work on that with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have four minutes left on here. Let's see, I know that Secretary Koff is not in attendance right now, but taking, again, sorry for the agenda out of order. Regarding, we should try to get the approval of the January twenty-two minutes. Oh, sorry, the February twenty-two minutes approved.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, so it's moved and seconded. And just before we voted, Member Koff did review the twenty-two minutes and recommended they be voted on. And so do we have any opposition to approving the February twenty-two minutes? Hearing and seeing none, motions approved, the February twenty-two minutes are approved. And moving on to the next item on the agenda with three minutes left. Does anybody have any updates, real quickly, on Banning Court Primary Urban Center Development Plan or All-A-Wide Flood Mitigation?
Updates?
Anybody else? God, hearing or, oh, I think Poa's hand is still up from the previous conversation. I don't see anything about that. Did anybody, okay, at this point, I'm going to have to probably table, potentially filling up any of the remaining vacancies on the Neighborhood Board to the next meeting. Unless anybody wants to shout out right now, say they want to join the board. Oh.
Chair Zane. I just wanted to ask if there's anything on item six C, in-person location for our meetings.
I have no updates to provide. I was
Not at this time. Elmer, I was looking into specifics about UH Manoa, and he had said that we would be able to have parking that would be part of it, but we have no more. I don't have any more specifics from him yet.
I don't either. I was hoping to discuss that earlier when there was the portion, but again, we ran out of time as well. Two presentations that we had to get through as well. So hopefully we can do more about this at the next meeting. I do apologize about that. And hopefully give you more updates at that time.
Chair, really quickly, can
Chris, you can just join us on WebEx. You don't have to drive down to the NCO building.
Well, I had to turn in my little form that said that I had watched the video, but I actually like to go to meetings in person. I'm hoping to be next to you guys at a meeting sometime, hopefully in the Manoa Valley.
Yeah.
That's fair. That's fair.
Chair, really quick, can I ask a question? A community member had asked for the developer's presentation from Ikenakea to be made available. Can you get them to send that to the board so that we can disseminate to folks in the community who would like to pursue it further?
Yes, I will ask them to put, to share with me so I can put it onto the shared drive for everybody to be able to access it. At this time, it's ninety-nine. Announcement, next meeting of the Neighborhood Board will be held on Wednesday, April three, twenty-twenty-four via WebEx online platform and back at Kapalama'ale Conference Center, room one-five-three, for anybody who wants to join our fellow board member over there. A little rebroadcast, watch on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at three o'clock PM or every third Tuesday at nine o'clock PM or online. Thank you very much. We are adjourning the meeting at this time at exactly ten o'clock. Thank you all for your patience throughout this entire process. We will see you again on April third. Mahalo ahuiho.
Everyone, good night.
Good night.